Hello everybody and we're back out of Executive Session for the remainder of the Zoning Board of Appeal January 15, 2019 hearing. We have four cases this evening. The first case, we just heard in Executive Session. The first matter of business to discuss is case number 1808. It's 76 Astor Avenue. It's a request for a minor modification from the medicinal medical marijuana facility that we approved some months ago. Then we have three other hearings behind that. 1825 is an open lock storage proposal at 347 Everett Street down behind Central Chrysler. They want to store cars down there if you own health and property. 862-878-Washington Street is case number 1823. It's a continuance of the zoning proposal to allow condominiums down to the ward by Barino's behind White End. And then the last case is number 1826, 253 Nahack Street is the condominium proposal at the rectory of the former Nun's home for St. Catherine's on Nahack Street. But up first is 1808, 76 Astor Avenue. Attorney Stacey, good to see you sir, and applicants, good to see you all. Counselor, if you will, there's been some talk that we may have to open the hearing up, or I'm sure you're going to tell us why we don't have to open the hearing up and re-advertise, and this is not a major modification to our decision. So the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As always, a pleasure to see you and members of the board. I'm representing Middlesex Integrated Medicine, as you know. And with me tonight is Nancy Corey, who's the president, Greg DeGusselis, the Director of Operations. Behind me is Ed Botlet, Norwood resident, vice president, and also the architect is here as well. I believe some correspondence was furnished to you in terms of some plans and some information, just by way of quickly giving you some updates. We did meet with the Norwood Fire Department and we had a very successful meeting with them. I believe some correspondence was sent to you on that matter. And we also had a meeting with the Norwood Police Department, Chief of Police. Wait, should I start?
No, no, we're just switching members, sorry.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Counselor. We're just switching members.
All right.
Sorry, Mary's going to sit in on Mrs. Kinter's behalf.
All right. Very good. Okay? Yes, sir. The Norwood Police Chief, I believe, sent a letter in terms of his review of the plan. I believe you have a copy of that letter in which he said the plans look sufficient and didn't consider it to be anything of any kind of concern. In a nutshell, the real, the three reasons why we changed the plan, what we're trying to consider it to be a minor modification, was first of all, to increase the size of the vault. Industry standards showed the petitioner that a larger vault would provide better security and also better storage.
Vault meaning storage of the marijuana.
That's correct. That is correct. So I can show you just quickly, and I know the plans were provided to you, but what I have here is the original plan. It was approved very quickly. Don't mean to make the delay of notice. This is the original size of the vault right here, as was approved by you, and this is the size of the vault and on the new.
Measurements from what to what?
Might consider to be bigger. Ryan, do you have a numbers on that?
It went to about 120 square.
120 square feet.
From what?
From, what was it?
Under 50.
From what was proposed originally? Under 50.
So order of change up to 100 and what?
140, from 50 to about 120. Again, the reason for that was to provide more storage and also it's enhanced security. The indirect result will be there'll be less deliveries, and so you'll have less traffic because there'd be less delivery of product from their off-site location where the product is grown. So there's an indirect benefit to the town of Norwood and to the surrounding area. Secondly, there was a change in the restrooms. The original plan had provided one ADA restroom and then two, if you will, non-ADA bathrooms. We now have two life-size ADA bathrooms on site. Those are shown on the plan. And third, in meeting with the Fire Department, they had decided, they suggested strongly, that access and egress be made for handicapped individuals and disabilities in the rear of the facility. This caused a little bit of a change in the plan, and again, this was to accommodate the ADA requirements and also to modify the plan as to the wishes of the Fire Department and other people that we got input on as well. In summary, we're going to have more storage, there'll be less deliveries. Parking's not a factor. There's still ample parking, as again submitted on the plan. I think the plan requires something in order of, well, we're over, we're over by 35 spaces. So definitely there's no impact on parking on this. And the mezzanine that we're providing does increase the floor space by about 600 square feet. Again, the benefit for that, and there are two. One is that we have some space for the employees. There's a small kitchen area, and again, enhanced security. There's an area that you can view out, out into retail area that provides better security for supervising what's going on inside the operation.
Is this change to the proposal going to affect your permitting process? Because I know you're, you're well along your way. Do you have to do this all over again with every board that you've gotten permission from?
No.
So it's only the ZBA for the, for the use down there?
That was it. And the use itself is consistent with the same use, and that you pursue it through by law, we're still well under the allowed floor.
Is this vault in keeping with other medicinal facilities size-wise?
That's what we found out. We were actually undersized, and that was one of the reasons. In looking at the facilities, the facilities range from 100 square feet and up, so we felt it was better to improve it right now and get it done.
Quick note from the Police Chief, William Brooks. Today I met with four representatives of Middlesex Integrated Medicine, including the Director of Operations and their legal counsel. I reviewed the plans. They brought me showing modifications to the original plan at 76 Astor Avenue, and as we discussed their security plan, which I had previously reviewed. In my opinion, the modifications do not, modifications do not present significant security concerns. Please let me know if I can be further service. Bill Brooks, Chief of Police. Fire Department has been notified, as you said, sir?
Yes, sir. We met with him Friday. I believe correspondence did come in late, but I believe the chief had said he was good with the plans, but did want us to make sure that we had on-site a defibrillator. I believe he wanted to make sure the rear access was addressed.
Yeah, I got it right here. Defibrillator in the building, defibrillator in the building, ambulance access and update the fire and sprinkler system. I informed the ZBA chairman, he may or may not address these items in relation to the new chairman.
We agreed any condition that he wishes. No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Stacey. Counselor, anything from the board? Mr. Perry, Mr. Brady, anybody?
Very simple. Basically, same use, same intent, basically interior renovations only, but we should have a new plan for our file. But other than that, there's no change in the process.
No, and the plan was submitted. Those plans were submitted. Absolutely.
Right. Tom?
We do have a new plan or we don't?
Yeah, did we? The plans were submitted. Yes.
Yeah, I have no problem.
Those were, they're in your office.
I have no problem.
Mr. Riley?
No questions.
Mrs. Anderson. And I should say, Mary Anderson is associate member. Thank you very much for sitting in this evening for Mrs. Kinter. It's always been, it's a volunteer board, and Mrs. Anderson, Mr. Murphy, Mr. ECR associates, and they're literally in the bullpen on call. Mary, thank you very much on behalf of the town. So, Mary has nothing, I have nothing. A pleasure of the board. Do we need a vote, Counselor?
There would be, a vote that would recommend a minor modification.
I would say we would have to.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
By Mr. Perry to approve the modification of the vault from 40 some odd feet to 150 feet?
Square feet.
50 square feet, is that right, Mr. City? Just under 150?
Under 150. Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Brady. All those in favor? Pose five to nothing. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys. No, I know. Come on, we want you. I know. Oh, I know. They're all.
Appreciate it.
I know. Thank you. I saw a couple of people that were going to the ground. I know. I know. Okay, so the next hearing, Mr. Hilliard, Mr. Glosser representing Mr. Katniss. Case number 1825, 347 Everett Street. Counselor Hilliard, how are you?
No. I'm not ready.
You never need permission.
Yeah, you do. You don't walk to the bench.
I don't have a robe on.
No, I'm sorry. I know judges don't either, but to make you know it.
Phil, can I have your look? Yeah. We're looking, we're looking for December 20th and December 27th for the advertisements. The affidavit, as is, as is the norm from Counselor Hilliard, is in order, and we're waiting for the attested advocate.
27th.
We're looking for the 20th. Then we have the 20th from Attorney Riley. The legal stuff is out of the way. What I'll do is I'll read the public notice and then hand the floor over to Attorney Hilliard. Notice has been given to the town, the Board of Appeal, the town of Norwood will hold a public hearing in room 12 of the Municipal Office Building, or in this case Memorial Hall, on January 15, 2019 at 7:15 PM on the request of Peter Katniss with respect to property located at 347 Everett Street in LM Limited Manufacturing District. The application requests a special permit under Section 5.2 and MGLA Chapter 48, Section 6 of the zoning bylaw to allow for extension of a pre-existing non-conforming use by replacing outdoor storage of farming, snow plowing, and other heavy equipment, along with outdoor storage of mulch, gravel, and cut wood with outdoor storage of automobiles. Plans are on file with the application in the office of the ZBA to be viewed during normal working hours, Monday through Thursday, 8 to 4 o'clock. All the statutory requirements having been met, I hereby declare the hearing open. Attorney James Hilliard and Mr. John Glosser, engineer for the applicant. John, good to see you.
See you, Mr. Chairman.
Jimmy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Speak loudly if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'm here tonight representing Peter Katniss, Presti of 347 Everett Street LLC. I have two individuals in addition to Mr. Glosser, Alan Boulay and Tommy Easie, both here tonight representing the petitioner. This is a request for a special permit, both under Norwood zoning by law and under Mass General Law, Chapter 6, Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 347 Everett Street. To put it in its proper location, if you were going up Everett Street and you continued up toward the left, toward Westwood, property is on the right. It's behind the UPS building. It, and to its rear is the Kyle Martinetti's, Martinetti Liquors Building, prior to him having sold and moved out. Directly across the street is a liquor distributor. So it's limited manufacturing area, and there are no residences that I'm aware of other than what Kyle Hauptman had before he passed away. And those of you who knew Kyle Hauptman knew that he owned a substantial amount of property on Everett Street, both his home and also business property that he subsequently sold, I believe he sold the UPS land before it was built. The property in the Hauptman family has been in there since the 40s, and the particular property in question, which if you're going up again on Everett is on the right-hand side, and from some of the plans I've shown you, it's 6.7 acres of land. There was a building on it, which was, I believe, where Kyle Hauptman lived. The use of this property from way back when, and they originally were using it back in the 40s and then all the way straightforward, the primary use was for the outdoor storage of a variety of things that Kyle used in his business. Trucks that he would use primarily in the summertime, trucks that he would use in the winter for plowing. He had tractors, he had trailers, he had plows, he had cut wood, loom, mulch. That everything was outdoors and it was being stored out in the side, which continued all the way through to the present time, where now it's being, because it's been purchased by my client, and now it's being cleaned up. In fact, he has placed some vehicles on the property as outdoor storage. So under the statute and under the town regulations, if a use, and we're talking of use now, not a structure, if a use was legal at the time it commenced and continued without interruption for 24 consecutive months, it was a use that could either continue on, or if it was to be extended or changed in any manner, then it required a special permit by the permit granting authority, which is the Town of Norwood Zoning Board of Appeal. And if you look at some of the pictures that I've given you, which are aerial photographs, you can see that for the most part, it goes back to the 70s. Those of us who have the memory and the individual that I've talked with, spoken with, it went back before Kyle, with his father, who was using it for farming, and again, equipment was being stored outside. So I would suggest to you that this is a pre-existing non-conforming use, and specifically outdoor storage of materials and so on and so forth. And what my client proposes to do is to extend the use somewhat and change the use a little, still for outdoor storage, and the outdoor storage would be brand-new automobiles. The brand-new automobiles would be brought to the site one to two times a day only. That's when deliveries are made. There would be no other traffic going in or out of the site. There would be no, at the current time, no buildings that would be for sales or for auctions or anything of that nature. This is strictly outdoor storage. The cars would be delivered then back to the dealership on a one, one basis. A car was needed, they would bring it down to the dealership. There would be low lighting and clearly conforming with the Norwood zoning, Norwood building zoning, rather, with respect to the type of lights that could be put on the building. And the property is also surrounded on all sides by commercial buildings and commercial business. So the difference between the prior use, those pictures will show you, that it was everything from mulch to trailers to trucks to plows to you-know-what. The difference between that and the difference between what my client wishes to use it for is a difference that clearly is not only not a substantial detriment to the area, it is probably an advanced use of the area because it doesn't have what all this other material that has been lying around for months and for years. The board, by the statute, has to find, from the facts presented to you, that this does not create a substantial detriment to this area, to the neighborhood, or to the town. That is what your finding has to be if you are to authorize a permit for a continuation and an extension of a pre-existing non-conforming use. That wording comes right out of the statute, and it comes out of the Norwood zoning by law. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and I have representatives from my client's automobile dealership as well. And Mr. Gloss is here, as any questions you have with respect to site and the site calculations.
Couple of quick questions, Jim. He's not going to make this a parking lot forever, is he? He didn't spend $3 million bucks to have a parking lot, did he?
No.
What's the ultimate plan down there?
The ultimate plan, I don't really know, other than the fact that as time goes, it will probably fall out. The ultimate plan could very well be building a building and use it, using it within the limited manufacturing uses under the, under the bylaw. I will tell you, and I think you know, that one of the single biggest issues facing Route 1 in the auto mile is having enough automobiles so that they can sell them when that, when someone comes in. This is not like coming in and finding a car, I like that, I'll wait for two weeks or three weeks. It doesn't work that way. The competition is such, if you don't have the car to give them the day they want to buy it, they go somewhere else. And that's particularly true on the auto mile, because we have so many dealers. Finding areas to park is also very difficult. Outdoor storage of automobiles, outdoor storage of anything in the Town of Norwood is only allowed in one zone, as a matter of right. And actually, that's a matter of a special permit, and that's in the manufacturing zone. It's not allowed anywhere else. It's one of the biggest demands in the town, and it's one of the demands that can be, the least be met. When the automobile dealers are paying in excess of $3 million a year and just on, basically on real estate taxes, they deserve at least some look at this, and some relief to the extent that it can be granted. The, what the future of the land holds is really what the future of my client's business may. There may very well be something else put up there. There's nothing that's planned as of this moment.
Okay.
So, long answer to a short question.
Very lively. The, the other question regarding the lot, maybe it's through you to John or to John. Very similar proposal Mr. Bock had at the old Subaru building on the corner of Ross and Pleasant Street. He put up a vinyl fence around there and you can't even see the cars. Does Mr. Katniss have any buffering proposal in front of us, or is, are we just going to drive by there and see a, see a car?
Well, no, that's, that's a question to most agree we were prepared for. The question is, would you rather see a vinyl fence or would you rather see cars?
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say, Jim, is that in the essence of fantasy, Mr. Bock spent five grand or 10 grand on a vinyl fence.
In my client's proposal, we show a fence along the front of the street.
Everett.
Everett Street. You know as well, better than I, that it is clearly within your authority as a condition of the, of the approval of anything, that as long as you put on it, you can put a reasonable condition on and we have to abide by it. So that's up to you. We, on the plans we submitted, we do show a fence along the front.
And for the record, can you just give the board a brief explanation of what the town has done since the proposal was first looked at? I think it was months ago, the town changed the zoning for open lock storage. Did they not?
No.
They haven't?
No, they have not changed it. There is discussions in the planning board, because this has come before them on several occasions. People have really getting desperate to find.
Those proposals haven't gone to nothing?
No, there is, there's nothing going before the zoning board that I'm, I'm sorry, before town meeting, that I'm aware of, that would ease the issue from limited manufacturing. Limited manufacturing, if you take a look at a zoning map in the Town of Norwood, it is the single biggest district in blobs. There are three large districts. There's one exactly here, which is off of Everett and that whole back area.
The old Polaroid.
And then there's the Polaroid, and there are some small pieces down.
That never went to town for you?
I'm not a member of the planning board.
I'll have to talk to this in Alkiotus. I, I thought.
They're discussing it, but discussing is, I think that's all.
And what you've testified as, as long as it's almost like adverse possession, if it's been used for 24 months continuously?
24 years, or 20 years.
Well, you're saying, you said it was used for 24 months?
No, if you abandon a use for more than 24 consecutive months, you lose that right to use it. Right to use it, yeah. But this has not been abandoned.
All right, we'll start out with Mrs. Anderson.
I have any questions?
Thank you very much. Mr. Riley?
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Brady?
I would just, I would advocate heavily for the fence. Other than that, I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Okay, that's a condition, you have the right to.
Mr. Perry?
A quick, quick question. I'm certainly familiar with the auto mile, but is, did you mention, Jim, there was a fence shown on the site plan?
Yes.
Okay, because I, if not, I don't have a copy of the site plan. So, all right. But that would be my only.
John, the fence is a vinyl, is it seat-a-link? What is it? What's the fence showing?
I would have to defer to the, either Mr. Easie or Mr. Boulay. You know what they're going to make the fence out of? Chain link with slats, I would guess, for, for security. Generally, it's chain link with slats.
I will say this, and, and I'm hoping you'd agree with this, is Mr. Bock put up the vinyl fence and you cannot see those cars. I mean, you have to really look. It's a six-foot high, and it interspersed shrubbery in between them to try and beautify it, if you will. Is that something that the applicant would be open to? So that you can't see them from the road?
With all due respect, the fence itself has not been discussed with my client. It just, a fence is all that's been discussed. The absolute type, height, style has not been.
Okay, so then, can I ask the applicant, and are you looking for a vote tonight?
Yes.
Okay, well, then, then I'm going to have to try and be the heavy guy here. I'd like to see a six-foot-high vinyl fence along the lines of what Mr. Bock put up on the old Subaru property, so that to the naked eye, the driver going down Everett Street, you're not looking at 300 cars.
Mr. Bock, is that the, is that the truck over?
Say it again.
Oh, Thomas, Mr. Easie's trying to interject some lighthearted humor in here, but, Tom, you know what I'm talking about, right?
No, I understand that, but, you know, I gotta see, I mean, and I'm speaking out of the lines, I don't know what's happening, but if he wants to do it, but when you look at the, you know, there's some residential area over by Subaru.
It's all Westwood. It's all Westwood.
Right, it's all Westwood, and it just, those, they look like walls, even down on Dean Street. It's not the, I mean, I gotta see a nice shrubs, you know?
And you reference a Dean Street, Tom. That was going through my mind here. You can't, you don't even know there's cars down there.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
That's what I'm talking about. You're out of sight, out of mind. You won't have any objections or what you.
I just don't, I don't, I'm not a big fan, especially in the white place, especially because.
I understand.
In a few years, especially at Dean Street, that is between UPS, trucks going down University F, I mean, we might as well put up a black fence, because that fence would be blocking those cars, just for the traffic. We actually had street cleaners out there, cleaner than the other day.
That fence isn't on the street, right?
Well, it's going to be, it'd be, you know, why?
What, 20 feet back, right?
I don't know, look, even, even along that wall, it's all, there's a nice rubbery sign that's showing more, guys, it'll show you that it's not a fence.
Tom, with all due respect, I'm going to stand firm. I'd like to see that fence, because again, it's what Mr. Bock put up, and I've heard from the folks in South Norwood, not big fans of Mr. Bock. Some of them are, some of them aren't. What he did down there has, again, as Mr. Brady's points, out of sight, out of mind. You can't even see the cars. So I'm going to stand firm on that, if I may, if I have to pass a gavel and make a motion that we.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes, Mr. Hilliard.
There is an extensive amount of work going on right now in trying to clear the site. Those pictures will give you an idea.
Sure.
And if the permit is approved, we have two years to complete the work to get it ready for it. What I would suggest, that we would consider either shrubbery, or shrubbery that would be put in on a, when it became a mature issue, that it would be blocking any of the site, or a fence, depending, because of the grading of the, of the land, the grading isn't as flat as we'd like to think it is. So shrubbery or a fence, one or the other, depending on what this is going to look like when they complete it, and we would do that, it would be completed at the same time the project itself would be completed.
Again, I don't want to look at a chain, well, listen to me. I'd rather the town not look at a chain link fence, because again, I'm referencing what Mr. Bock put up. You can't see them, it's vinyl, he did a great job down there, and you don't even know they're there unless you really know they're there. So if you can tell me, and you can show me through a landscaping plan, that you're going to put up a chain link fence behind a row of Canadian spruce or something that's going to grow together quickly, and you can't even see them in five years, or three years, or But, I mean, you want to vote tonight, though, Jim, so we got to decide on something.
That would be more acceptable.
What would?
Chain link and shrubs.
Chain link and shrubs would be acceptable.
Okay, so the chain link is going to contain the, the area of the cars, and then, Jim, you and I have gone through this before.
Shrubs.
It's not going to be 10 feet apart. These are going to be close together.
No, no, that's right.
And so will you get the board a landscape plan?
Sure.
Okay, something, but you're going to want to vote tonight, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we would have to deal with those.
Okay.
Okay? Anybody, anybody further? Before you turn it up to the audience?
Well, I'd prefer the.
The vinyl?
No, I'm not a fan of vinyl.
Okay.
Because I think you notice it too much. I would think it's, it would be softer with alabadis or something like that, which is a natural.[1788.61]
Problem is, one of the things we face is the board and the townspeople are...
I understand.
All you hear around town is we don't wanna see a parking lot all over town, which I understand as well. So, the protection of the townspeople, I think it's a simple compromise.
Okay.
Anything further? Before we open it up to the audience?
Well, I'm in favor of anything that just blocks it up, like some fence and alabites or whatever that are close together.
Okay.
Close together. Now, I'll hear from anybody in the audience. Anybody wanna be heard on 347 Everett Street? The proposal to store? Mrs. Howard, can you come forward, please, because we don't have the microphone? And then I'll go through the rules after this, after this hearing's over. Hi, Judith.
Judith, how, how we in the district, please? I'd just like to know how many cars would, uh, would be going into this lot? Because after that, on the street, so, so, how many cars would fit in there?
We could probably, we could probably, if we, if we took the entire area, we could probably fit in excess of 700 cars. The likelihood is, we will only use the same amount of property that was used by the Hultman family, which would probably take 600 cars.
Okay.
But again, be fenced in, you won't see them.
Okay. Um, does the town charge any amount of funds for each car?
Not that I know of.
Registered cars on open lot storage?
Not at this time. I believe that's part of the future proposal, that I thought was moving forward, if not it had been drafted, but not at this time, to the best of my knowledge.
Okay. And then also, I would love to see, noise the phone, yes, it was, it was landscaping the cars before, just like, I would just say, you know, good landscaping.
We will give a plan to the board. And Mr. Chairman, an answer to your first question. The town assesses a tax on every automobile deal based on the number of cars they have on their lots, whether they're being outdoor stored, or whether they're being lot on its for sales. So, this does increase the income of the town.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mrs. Howard. The other part that I, I had a discussion with Attorney Hearn with last hearing regarding the Jaguar dealership, is the offloading of the vehicles will not be on Everett Street?
No, let me explain.
You'll have enough area?
Offloading of the vehicles has been, we have been told by the town, we cannot offload on Route 1. We have to offload somewhere else, and that's somewhere else we at the site.
Yeah, so up there.
That's only twice a day at the most.
Well, that bylaw, or that edict has not been followed, as I referenced last minute, so...
Probably not by other dealers.
Okay, so, anybody further wanna be heard on Everett Street? Sir, right up here? Any way to turn that microphone up, the volume, Ramonda?
I think it's on...
Oh, the reverb there? Just try it. See if you can't get a little more. Hang on one second. Okay, go ahead now, sir.
Hi, my name's Frank Gobey, I'm director of it, I've been a long time.
Mr. Gobey?
And it looks 1,000% better than it's looked in my entire memory, so I'm, I'm in favor with the applicant's doing.
Right, and then as far as, that you're, you own a home up there?
No.
No, so, okay, sit down.
My, my, my property's not residential.
Right. No, again, it's all, it's Westwood, and our friends in Westwood, we love them dearly. But again, I think it's all about landscaping and how it's gonna look, and I know Peter will do a good job. Mr. Hilliard's gonna write up the landscape plan, so, or Mr. Blossom. Anybody further? Going once, twice, motion to close the hearing.
Motion.
By Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Brady. All those in favor, close, by for nothing, the pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Brady. All those in favor, and it's subject to, Jim, a landscape plan showing a fence that we can review?
Two weeks.
That's fine. Uh, Ramonda?
Is the fence gonna have slats or slats?
Well, I don't, I mean, again, there's gonna be shrubbery in front of the fence, but the fence is gonna be the, the container, the containment mechanism for the cars and the security. So as long as we can't see the fence, I don't care if it's a barbed wire.
I know something.
You know what I mean? Yeah. John, nice and tight, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
I've got a good person who can...
Five to nothing, approved, Ramonda, pending the landscape plan from Attorney Hilliard and Engineer Blossom. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Tom, thank you, thank you for your humor.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This guy? He's good. Oh, he's... Can we get this kind of... Yeah. Okay, so the next hearing we have, folks, is, let me just get organized here. And it's still an open hearing, that we continued from... When was the initial hearing, officer?
December 4th.
December 4th. At that time, uh, before, yeah, before I go through the hearing, folks, let me just tell you how the ZBA hearings works go, so that we can get some ground rules. So if anybody wants to be heard on this one, there wasn't much input from the neighbors in the town at the last hearing, but for the future hearing that's coming up for the St. Catherine's proposal, the chair will read the public notice, check the affidavit and the advertisement to make sure that they're in order, so all the legalities are straight, and then will turn the floor over to the applicant. In this case, it's Attorney Bobowski for the applicant. After the applicant has made his case, the board will question the applicant, and then after the board has done questioning the applicant, will open it up to discussion from the members in the audience that wanna be heard. I will ask you, because we have a microphone up here, in years past, we'd have a microphone in the back, but now the microphone is up front, please raise your hand, get recognized, come up to the microphone, name and address for the record, and please just keep your discourse between the chair to the applicant and anything you might have to say. All we ask is if we try not to be redundant, if you hear your question asked once, try not to be repetitive, so for the sake of time, so everybody can be heard. Everybody that wants to be heard will be heard, so no question is a bad question. All we ask, like I said, is that not having three or four of the same questions over and over. So, maybe not this case, but the St. Catherine's one coming up, that's pretty much that for. So, Attorney Bobowski, last time we met, we had some questions. Attorney Riley and yourself were going back and forth regarding, I believe it was 422, about the use issue and expanding a non-conforming use, whether it would trigger the variance mechanism or the variance criteria in the bylaw. I think that's gonna be a sticking point, and I don't wanna speak for Mr. Riley, but reviewing the tape, I know that you sent a memorandum to the board, explaining as such, and Rockwood's decision in there, and it's good reading for non-lawyers.
Title?
But, yeah, so I'll give you the floor, but if you could highlight that, because I've keyed in on that myself, and having spoken with Mark Schubert and Attorney DeLuca, that could, that, that's the linchpin. As I said before, and I'll say it again for the public, I'm an advocate for this. I wanna find a way to say yes to this under the parameters, within the parameters, of our bylaws. If we stomp on them, unfortunately, you may not have an advocate on this side of the table. I wanna say yes, and I'm hoping that you can convince me to say yes with your explanation. So please, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Mark Bobowski, my office is in Concord, I represent the applicant. I think, to begin with, we adequately covered last time, that we are asking for four special permits under Section 5 of the bylaw. And I don't think they're really terribly in dispute. The sections that we're asking for a special permit under are 522. We're asking to change one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use that's not more detrimental to the character of the neighborhood of the district. And that's, is a bad building today with non-conforming uses in it. The uses in it today are garages, apartments, and a storefront. At least one of those is non-conforming. And we're proposing to make it into a better non-conforming use. That's the first special permit. They get easier. The second special permit is to reconstruct, extend, or structurally change a non-conforming structure. The structure's non-conforming because it's too close to the rear property line. What we propose to do is change it, and in fact, take it out of the rear property line, so we're obviously improving that deficiency. The third special permit is in statutory language. We're altering the structure to provide for a substantially different purpose, or for the same purpose in a substantially different manner, or to a greater extent. That's 532. The first one I mentioned was 522, the second one I mentioned was 531, the third one is 532. The, we're clearly changing what's in the building. It's going from six garages, seven apartments, and one storefront to 12 apartment, for sale units. So we need a special permit under that. And the last special permit that we need is under Section 5.7. We're asking for a special permit that would move the structure off of its existing footprint, and that is allowed by special permit under 573. Now, I think the only remaining, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that everybody from the last time was relatively comfortable, that what we're doing there is better than what is there today. And that's the essence of those four special permits, is what, are we creating more detriment to the neighborhood than the detriment that exists from the existing schlock that's on the property today?
I misspoke, I said 422, so it's 522.
Yeah, it's 522.
Again, keying on the, the, the crux of Counselor Riley, which he's gonna be heard...
I'm, I'm coming.
About the use versus the structure.
All right, so as we left it last time, I wanted a chance respectfully to respond to Counselor Riley's questions about 53, 533, which says variance required. And I pointed out in the memorandum that I submitted to you, that 533 is an attempt, on my part, I wrote it, to codify the holding in Rockwood versus Snow Incorp. In Rockwood versus Snow Incorp, non-conforming in was being assessed by the Board of Appeals as to whether or not a variance was required. It all had to do with lot area, and whether you measured the lot boundary by the high water mark or the low water mark. If you measured it by the high water mark, it was too small and you needed a variance. If you measured it by the low water mark, it was big enough and you didn't need a variance. But I take the case to stand for the proposition that a, a non-conforming structure, and it only applies to non-conforming structures. Keep that in mind. Rockwood is not about uses, it's only about structures. A non-conforming structure may be altered, but it always requires a special permit. And I'm not talking about single or two-family homes, I'm talking about office buildings, apartment buildings, you know, garages, whatever else that's non, not a single or a two-family. There's special rules for single or two-family. So if you're coming in to alter a non-conforming structure, and you're, you're not creating any new non-conformities, or exacerbating an existing non-conformity, you can do it by special permit. That's essentially what Rockwood says. And you need a special permit, you just can't do it. You have to get a special permit in order to do it. If you're creating new non-conformities, or exacerbating existing non-conformities, and these are, these are the words of the court on the top of page four of 10 that I gave you, would intensify the existing non-conformities, or result in additional ones, the court cites Willard, then you need a variance. So what are we doing to the non-conforming structure here? It's non-conforming today, and we're making the structure entirely conforming. It's not being exacerbated, or made more non-conforming. All the non-conformities, dimensionally speaking, are going away. So the key in the, the case, the, the Rockwood case, is that this building can be altered by special permit. I know where the, where the argument goes next, and I'll anticipate what Counselor Riley will say.
I'm just gonna ask it myself, are you expanding the non-conformity, which will trigger the variance?
No, that's a use.
The lot area?
No, it has nothing to do with the structure or the dimensional attributes of the building. The building will go from being non-conforming today to conforming tomorrow. And that's why Rockwood only requires a special permit for it. You might say that the new structure with 12 apartment units is going to have more apartment units than the footnote in the dimensional table would otherwise allow when you do the math. But that, I would argue, is a change of use, not a change of dimension. And my example in my memo is perfect. It says that the same building, totally in conformance, front, rear, side, height, can have either 12 units or six units in it. It'd be the exact same unit to the observer from the street, and the only difference between it is the use of the building as a six-unit building, or the use of the building as a 12-unit building. So Rockwood does not apply to uses. Variances in Rockwood necessitated by the holding in Rockwood do not apply to uses, they only apply to structures. This structure needs no variance, because it completely conforms to the dimensional requirement.
Has Rockwood been tested since 92?
Rockwood's the Supreme Judicial Court, it doesn't need to be tested.
I mean, there's been other, no, no cases that have come before that have referenced Rockwood?
Rockwood's been adhered to since 1992. It's a powerful case in Section 6 jurisprudence.
Okay. Keep going if you'd like, or do you wanna hear from Mr. Riley?
That's pretty much it, I, I...
And I got, it was pretty succinct, it was pretty succinct, and again, I get it.
Yeah.
I guess, you know, again, it's... Phil?
I hadn't been talking about the use. I understand what you're trying to say. It's interesting that in the 12 years, or whatever, that this bylaw has been in effect. I don't recall one lawyer coming in and advancing the suggestions that you made.
Well, remember, remember, Counselor, I wrote it.
I understand that you wrote it, and I understand what you intended, but obviously, the language that appears in the bylaw is what's important. I still think it's followed, incidentally, I have a, looking at a copy of your, your book, actually, and page 200, when you're talking about reconstruction, extension, and so forth, you comment that if the proposed modifications you have in this case reach the level of reconstruction, extension, or structural change, any municipality is authorized to changes, the case is governed by Rockwood. I think it's governed by Rockwood.
I, I don't disagree that it's governed by Rockwood, but Rockwood in this instance does not insist upon a variance.
Well, let me finish, if I may. I think it's governed by Rockwood in this respect. If you look at the Rockwood and Snow Inn case, the problem with Snow Inn had, well, first of all, both the property in Snow Inn and the property in this case were non-conforming issues, I think, I pointed out because of shortages and setback. The problem with Stone, that Snow Inn had, was that the structure that was going to result was not going to comply with the provisions in the Harwich zoning board of their table of dimensional requirements of maximum lot coverage. It was going to be too big. I suggested in this case, the same thing is happening. You look in this case, the only difference is that in the Norwood table of dimensional requirements, it's not complying with the minimum lot area. I think it's controlled by, by Rockwood, and you need a variance. If you had a situation where you were dealing with perhaps one building that was being enlarged and changed, I might agree with you on the evil's argument. But by the own, the language appearing actually in your very book, if you're talking about reconstruction, I think it triggers the Rockwood case, which as you point out, is codified in 533, and I think Rockwood controls this case. And of course, there's no request for a variance.
No, there is no request for a variance.
I, I don't see how we go forward on a special permit alone. Well, you still need a special permit, I don't think we can move forward on that alone.
Mr. Chairman, I'm inclined to ask the board to vote on each of my special permit requests. I understand there's no variance in front of you, and you couldn't give me a variance tonight if you wanted to, because of the open meeting law, not to mention no notice or publication in the newspaper. But I'd like to hear from the board on the question of my special permit application But I'd like to hear from the board on the question of my special permit application for four different special permits.
Well, I, I'm running into an issue here too. Um, and correct me, Ramonda and other board members, Mrs. Kinter sat in the last hearing. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
And Mrs. Anderson's sitting in this evening. Now, is that the, um, the Mullen rule taking effect here?
I would, I would assume so.
I would assume then that, uh, Mrs. Anderson has familiarized herself with the record.
Yeah, I would assume so. So I would assume we can't do much more than that.
And Mary, have you reviewed the record?
No, no. Well, I might point out.
Then I would ask for a continuance. Then I would ask for a continuance.
She only found out she was sitting about ten minutes before the hearing.
I understand. I'm, I'm not in any way saying that negatively, but I would ask for a continuance.
I, I'm, I'm, I just was putting two and two together here, uh, while I was standing up there. It's not fair to Mrs. Anderson, not fair to you.
I get it.
Okay. And, um, I think Mrs. Kinter should be here. So you're right with the continuance?
Absolutely. When's your next meeting?
Ramonda, next hearing?
February fifth.
February fifth at seven fifteen mark, okay?
I have to get my calendars. Please excuse me.
Maybe it works either way. Either, either one of them will hear the record or the other here.
No worries.
Either one.
Chinese New Year.
Fifth at seven fifteen?
Thank you.
Okay. We stand adjourned until the fifth at seven fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mark. Sorry about that. I just wanted to be fair to everybody here.
No, I, I knew that she was, uh, not coming. I knew Mary was sitting in, but I did not know Mary.
I didn't know.
No.
So, all right. Very good. Thank you. Sure. We'll take, we'll take a five-minute recess, uh, my friend. Yeah. We're gonna do a five-minute recess, okay? And we're back from our recess. Thank you very much. Uh, we're gonna continue the, uh, the public hearing schedule here. Uh, the next case up is, uh, case number eighteen twenty-six, uh, two fifty-three and Hatten Street. And as, folks, just again, I'm gonna be reading the public notice and then, uh, Mr. Hearn will have the floor. He'll present his case to the board. The, uh, the board will question the applicant. Uh, after the board has done questioning the applicant, we'll open it up to the audience. Please raise your hand, be recognized, and then come forward to the microphone and identify yourself for the record and ask away. So let me, uh, we've got the public notice here, the affidavit and the advertisements. Let me go to Mr. Brady and Mr. Perry. Um, we're looking for December twenty-seventh and January third.
Well, I have, uh, an opinion on adult behaviors. I don't.
December twenty-seventh.
Yeah, I have.
Twenty-seventh.
And I have the January third.
The third, thank you, gentlemen. Affidavit is in order. The advertisements in order having been attested by members Brady and Perry. Let me read the public notice. We'll open the hearing up, David, and it's all yours. Give me one second here. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals, the town and all will hold a public hearing in room twelve of the municipal office building, which is now Memorial Hall. We've moved the, moved the meeting. So for the record, it is now Memorial Hall. On January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven forty-five PM, at the request of Manhattan Development LLC, case number eighteen twenty-six, with respect to property located at two fifty-three Nahatten Street, JB General Business District. The application requests a special permit under section three point one, point five, point A, point four, and four point two, point one, if applicable, of the ZB, of the zoning bylaws to allow development of up to nineteen residential townhouse-style condominiums in several separate buildings, together with such other and further relief as the zoning Board of Appeals may determine to be appropriate. The application also requests a variance under the general laws of the Commonwealth of Mass to allow, A, less front setback from the neighboring residential district boundary than required under the zoning bylaws, and B, if applicable, less lot area than required under the zoning bylaws, together with such other and for, or further relief as the zoning Board of Appeal may determine to be appropriate. Plans are on file with the application and the zoning Board of Appeals office may be viewed during normal working hours, Monday through Thursday, eight PM to four PM. All the statutory requirements having been met, I hereby declare the hearing open. Attorney David Hearn for the applicant. Good evening, David.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, I'm appearing this evening on behalf of Manhattan Development LLC. For the record, my name is David Hearn Jr. and I'm, I am an attorney with an office at four seventy Washington Street here in Norwood. With me this evening is, uh, two over from me, Derek Fitzgerald, who's one of the principals of Manhattan Development LLC.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, Mike Sullivan, who's, uh, one of the other principals, could not be with us this evening because of another commitment, uh, and Dan Merrican of Legacy Engineering, who is, uh, our engineer on this project and has prepared the plans.
Is that Ron, any relation to Ron?
To Ron?
Ron Merrican?
Rick.
Rick Merrican?
That's my father.
Yeah. I haven't seen him in a long time, so.
He's happily retired.
There you go. Good guy.
Um, the property that is the subject of this, uh, proposed redevelopment is commonly referred to as the St. Catherine's Convent property. It has an address of two fifty-three Nahatten Street and, uh, the, as you may already be aware from a sign that's been posted on the, in the front yard of the convent for the last couple of years, the Archdiocese, which actually owns all of the real estate of the different parishes and the Boston Archdiocese, the Archdiocese has been trying to sell this property for some time. And it, uh, uh, some months ago, several months ago, my clients entered into a purchase and sale agreement with the Archdiocese for the redevelopment, the purchase and redevelopment of the property for residential purposes. This property is located in a general business zone. I refer to it in the memorandum that I filed with you this evening as an island of general business surrounded, um, to a great extent by residential uses. And on the other side, of course, the St. Catherine's school buildings. My clients are proposing to redevelop the site not for business purposes, not for commercial use, but for, uh, residential use. And they propose to build nineteen townhouse-style condominiums in eight separate buildings on the site. Now, in the course of our transactions with the parish and the Archdiocese, we have agreed on a particular lot because this had not previously been divided into separate lots. And the lot that we ended up with agreeing on and which was approved by the planning board as an approval-not-required plan, uh, provides us with just under two acres of land for this development. It is, uh, a piece of land that we believe allows us to develop nineteen units without really increasing density on the site, um, compared with similar developments elsewhere in the town. Uh, it is a use that we think is the best use for the site when one considers that we're surrounded by a school on one side and residential uses on all the other side. The relief that we're looking for involves two types of relief. Special permit relief because we're dealing with multifamily dwellings, which require special permits in order to be located in any zone in the town. And we're also looking for, um, relief, uh, to allow us to develop the project with less land than would be required under certain types of calculations that could be done under the bylaw. By that, I mean, the way we propose to lay this out with separate buildings, um, you, the flexible residential development that's allowed under the bylaw would require us to show that we've got separate lots. We could lay out separate lots. And you'd have to have about a hundred and fifteen or a hundred and eighteen thousand square feet to do that under that scenario. We have less than that. On the other hand, when you compare this with other developments that have been approved in the town, and I'll point to the Marini development down on, uh, in, in the former Concanon site, we have approximately thirty-six percent more land available per unit than was allowed and, and approved by this board for that site. Now, we're proposing more buildings, but we think that that fits in better with the site than to build an apartment building. Now, along the way, we invited all of the abutters to a meeting at the Civic Center, which was held in the evening of January second. We had about forty people or so show up for that meeting. And, um, we made a brief presentation about the project and we, um, also, uh, answered questions. Most of the questions seemed to revolve around traffic, um, construction concerns, because there's a fair amount of ledge on the property, drainage on the property. Uh, there were some questions about, uh, the roadway and, and the width of the roadway, but the roadway is, is plenty wide for the proposed use. And, uh, we also discussed that there are other uses that could be made of the property, but that it would not, um, be probably as welcome as residential use in the town. I know that the board has received some correspondence from, uh, some of the neighbors, um, and others. Uh, I received that from Ms. Morgan this afternoon about four o'clock, and I'm grateful for her forwarding that to us. We've reviewed it also. Uh, there are, uh, questions about why don't you keep the convent? And let me deal with that off the top because some people would say, isn't that a wonderful building? Couldn't you redevelop that? Initially, when the Archdiocese started marketing the property, they made it a condition that any developer buying the property would have to keep that building, or at least in large part, keep it. Um, the result was that they didn't get any good bids for the property. And ultimately, they saw that the only way that this property could be sold for a price that would benefit the parish and the school, and by the way, that's where the money will go from the sale of this property. It doesn't go to the chancery. It goes, it's kept in the parish for the parish use and the use of the school. The only way the property could be sold for a reasonable price from the seller's point of view was to allow a developer to go forward with a project that might involve demolition of the convent. My clients are proposing that. And they are proposing that because they have been through the convent building and as nice as it may look on the outside, the inside does not lend itself to redevelopment. There has been serious damage to the building from leaks and other problems over the years. It has been a drain on the parish finances. They've mothballed it and still it costs money. Um, and so we're proposing something that would be a, uh, good redevelopment of the site. Now, concerns about construction and the ledge. My clients know that there could be some difficulties with this site. You run into that on almost any site. And they believe that with the appropriate precautions that are required by law, that they'll be able to deal with the soil conditions and the ledge conditions on this site without any major difficulty. They appreciate that folks are concerned about whether they might have flooding problems. Some of the neighbors on Railroad Ave spoke to us about problems they've had in the past with flooding. We have designed a drainage system that we think will capture most of the water on this site and deal with it so that it will not be going off onto neighbors' property. We think we're going to improve the situation compared with what is presently, um, going on, on the site with respect to that, uh, drainage. With respect to traffic, somebody commented at the meeting on January second that there could be a big problem with traffic, people coming out. Nahatten Street backs up in the morning during the rush hour when kids are going to school. We know that. I'm often caught in that traffic myself. But, um, a lot of that depends upon who buys the units. If they're retired folks, they're not going to be going out in the middle of rush hour. If they're folks that are going to take public transportation, they would get to the train station faster walking than they would driving and save themselves the parking fee. So we think that the traffic will not be a big concern here also. We think that we can meet the concerns and the, um, uh, questions that have been raised to us by the neighbors. Now, with respect to the board, the board has to look at whether this is a, uh, project that would be a good reuse of the land, would not create, uh, problems that, uh, insurmountable problems that would cause harm to neighboring properties, whether the proposed development fits in with the neighborhood, whether the proposed site improvements will fit in in terms of character and style and so forth. And we believe we can demonstrate, uh, that we will meet all of those requirements. With respect to the conditions that the, uh, are mentioned in my memorandum and that the board normally has to, uh, consider, social, economic and community needs, I think we've responded to that, that this is an appropriate use. Residential use is normally considered better than commercial uses. And on this site, I think residential use is, um, more appropriate and should be more welcome than a commercial use. It fits in with many of the principles of smart growth. Uh, it's not exactly smart growth because it doesn't involve an affordable unit, um, uh, an affordable, uh, component, rather, but this is close to local businesses, close to the downtown, with an easy walking distance of public transportation. It also serves community needs in that it will help a local school that is really an institution in this town, uh, and that many of us are very familiar with because the proceeds of the sale will help St. Catherine's School. On the question of circulation, we think that there'll be very little, um, uh, detrimental conditions, uh, arising from people coming and going. I've already spoken to that. As far as utilities go, should be no problems with utilities. We understand that with respect to environmental impacts, there could be some concern during demolition of the convent. There's probably asbestos in there. Uh, there could be noise and dust. All of that will follow a construction management plan that we expect would be worked out with various officials of the town to minimize the disruption. As far as land use compatibility goes, again, we're in a general business zone. There are a lot of uses that could be put in there as a matter of right, um, and, uh, childcare center, which I suggest would produce a lot more traffic and a lot more disruption to the neighborhood. Uh, there could be, uh, retail stores on that site, office uses. All of these could be done as a matter of right. Um, a place of business for a building tradesman or caterer. Uh, all of those things could go on. We're proposing a use that is more compatible for the land, a residential use. As far as visual compatibility, we plan to build attractive townhouse-style buildings, some with three units, some with two units, that will fit on the site, will not be overpowering, will have their lines staggered in such a way so that they won't seem to be, um, so much higher than neighboring houses. Uh, they will fit in. The fiscal impacts will be positive for the town. Building new housing will generate a conservative estimate, about seventy-five thousand dollars in new tax money coming into the town on an annual basis. That's a conservative estimate. This is a property that is exempt from real estate taxation. We will be putting it on the real estate tax rolls when, uh, built out. Uh, that will be a positive thing. And these types of developments don't necessarily require a lot of service from the town. The road serving the condominium project will be a private road, not require maintenance by the town or plowing by the town. So we'll be paying, our buyers will be paying taxes, but they won't be calling upon the town for the types of services you see in other projects. As far as process goes, I mentioned our meeting with the neighbors. We sent out over ninety invitations to all of the abutters to, um, uh, invite them to a, an informational meeting and we were pleased with the turnout of about forty people. Tough to do, right after New Year's, the only date we could get that allowed for a reasonable, um, room to be used and to give people notice. As far as variance conditions, um, that you would be thinking about, this is a site that, um, is in the, they say, in the middle of a residential area with a school to one side, but it's a general business, a zoning district. The bylaw requires a hundred and fifty-foot setback from, um, the residential district boundary, which runs down the middle of Nahatten Street. We're asking for relief from that, uh, because the imposition of the hundred and fifty feet would render the project, um, perhaps undoable. the project perhaps undoable or render it financially unworkable. I think that the board may agree that the 150-foot setback requirement between a business district and the residential district is designed to protect the residential district from business uses. We're not proposing a business use. We are proposing a residential use. So we're asking for relief from that, because we want to build just residential use, and we want to be able to build a reasonable distance into the site. Also, the shape of the lot, which is very irregular shape, as you can see from the board there, and the presence of ledge creates some difficulties as far as what we can do with the site. And in order to make this project financially viable, we need some relief with respect to the number of units that we can put on the site and where we can place those units. The only relief we're looking for with respect to dimensional requirements is the setback from the district boundary and the total area. We satisfy the buffer requirements, side yard, rear yard, lot area, coverage, all of that is satisfied. It's a question of, do we have to be 150 feet back from that line that runs down the middle of Manhattan Street, which I submit is designed to protect residential uses from business uses and is not necessary to protect residential uses from other residential uses? As I mentioned, to make this project financially viable, and I will tell you that in the course of this property being marketed, a lot of people looked at it and felt they could not make this project work until my clients came along. We proposed the townhouse concept rather than building an apartment building that I think most people would find objectionable on that site, but which could be done with much less worry about lot area and everything else. So we're asking for that relief to avoid the hardship that would come. We think that relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw, because the use that we're making is a good use for this site. It will remove an old building. It's nearly 100 years old, the convent building. It is not in good shape. It has been a drain on the finances of the parish. And we would replace it with up-to-date, code-compliant, attractive housing units that would be suitable for people starting out, people retiring, people in the middle. It will not have a significant increase, significant increase in traffic in the area. It will add to the tax base of the town, and it will fix that use as being residential going forward and not a business use. This is a responsible, smart-growth-type proposal for this site, which is a difficult site, but it is a good use of the site. So we ask that the board consider the request for relief, that you authorize by special permit the use of the property for multifamily dwellings, that you authorize relief by special permit and by variance for flexible residential development, that you authorize relief from the 150-foot setback between the business district and the residential district, and that you give whatever other relief is considered, contemplated within the application. Now, Mr. American, I'm going to ask him, as our engineer, to get up and briefly take us through the plan and answer. He can certainly answer questions, and I know the board is likely to have questions. But Mr. American has done all the work on the drainage, on the layout, and he knows the soil conditions. He knows the site very, very well. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mr. Hearn. Mr. American?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And then the board. So, Dan Hearn, ladies and gentlemen. This is the existing condition of the site. The church property, the school property is over here. This is the edge of their parking lot. So the site as proposed is 10, 12 feet off the parking lot. This is all presently wooded except for the convent space. This is the convent here in beige. There's a couple of walkways down from the street. There's a stone wall across the front. And then there is a paved driveway and a little paved parking area out the back. So the proposal there, as Mr. Hearn mentioned, would be to demolish the convent. There is also some rock on the property. There's a, there's a pretty good-sized knob right here. It straddles the lot line, and it's ledge and possibly some marked folders. There's a lot of tree growth in there. It's fairly weathered, but it's pretty substantial. So it's part of our design. We're trying to avoid that area as much as we can with our work. What is proposed is 19 units installed in groups of twos or threes, of eight floors total. We have duplex arrangements, and we have triplex arrangements here. We would come in off of Manhattan Street, just up the street a little bit from Maple Street, half a Manhattan Street grade. We would come in with a 20-foot paved driveway with a caved urn on the side, which basically gives you an effective width of 22 feet. There is a sidewalk fracture proposed along one side. That driveway will come in. It's a private driveway. It would loop around. This is sufficient to provide for emergency vehicle access, fire truck access, whatever access a police and fire may need into the property. And then people would certainly down and back out. Each unit has a two-car garage at grade. So the first level of the unit is the garage, and then above that are two building levels. Two-car garage with room for two vehicles in front. So each unit has four parking spaces associated with them, individual private parking spaces. Grading, we're trying to work with the slope of the land. Everything is downhill towards the school parking lot. So we are, we are having our runoff come down through here. We're picking it up in a monseigneur stormwater management collection systems. And then we have an underground infiltration system in this area, which is why this gap is here. So we'll do it in that location. So we collect all the runoff from all of the roofs, all of the paved surfaces. We pre-treat it, and we route it into the underground infiltration system. And that's designed to handle all the design storms for the project. And we are bringing in all the utilities that are normally associated with this water, sewer, electric, gas. We are working on a landscape plan. There's going to be, we're going to be doing some fencing along those railroad Ave properties and along school properties. It's probably going to be a six-foot, you know, concrete tower fence, iron or wood for basically screening purposes. We're also going to have, we're going to do tree planting and screening along those property boundaries. Down along the Manhattan Street properties, that big chunk of rock is basically the screening that's usually made. The rock is going to extend, extend up 15 or 20 from grade. So we have to remove some of it along our side to get this, this loop in for a fire truck to turn on the basis of. But we're not, we're avoiding that rock as much as we can. You know, we're trying to do minimal removal of that rock. So that lot of rock is going to stay in place, and that basically forms a barrier between the proposed development and all these homes here along Manhattan Street. So that's a broad overview. Do you have any questions about the design and layout of the site?
More so to the creation of the lot. David, was this an existing lot, or did you carve this out, or did the Archdiocese carve it out? Because I thought it was one big property.
The St. Catherine's property is actually a collection of various parcels that over many years were deeded to the parish over the Archdiocese. So when we entered into this agreement, one of the things we had to do was carve off a new parcel, a new boundary. And the boundary follows, to a great extent, the line of the parking lot, but it's in from the parking lot.
That goes with my next question. Was any thought given by being at all, you know, funneling out to Manhattan Street? Is there anything, was there any discussion about, you know, some sort of partial regress out to Railroad Avenue? I know the playground's there. I know the recesses are busy and whatnot, but just to pour it out on Manhattan Street? Or did you look at Railroad? Was there a possibility, or was it just?
It really wasn't a possibility, because that's needed for playground and parking purposes for the parish. The school buses come in, one of those driveways, they go out the other. That really wasn't part of it. It might be something that we use on a temporary basis during construction, but as far as a permanent arrangement, no. And as far as the layout of the buildings on the lot, I'll leave it to Dan, but I don't think it really lends itself to having a backdoor way of getting out. Manhattan Street really is about the only way that makes practical sense.
What about guest parking?
Well, we have four spaces. So as far as guest parking goes, take these, the typical owners are likely to have one, maybe two cars. That leaves two other spaces available for visitors. You've got.
Seventy-six spaces. Seventy-six spaces.
We have 76 spaces total.
Including the garages.
Including the garages. So if somebody owning a unit has two cars, they've got two spaces in the garage. That leaves two spaces in front. It more than satisfies the requirements of the bylaw, which requires three for a two-unit building.
You're going to fence off the parking lot with a recess area where the kids play completely? Are you going to have a gate access out to there, or somebody's going to have to walk out onto Manhattan Street from the conflict?
When, when we had the meeting with the neighbors, one, I think somebody asked whether we might put a gate in that. We plan to put fencing along the back. Somebody asked if we might put a gate in in case somebody kicks a ball over. They don't have to go all the way out to the street and come in the back way. We're open to that, and if the school wants that, if they think that's a good idea, we're open to that. But we don't expect to be directing residents from our project onto the school property, onto the playground property. We're trying to create a physical barrier. As you may know, there's a walkway that goes from Manhattan Street along the side of the school building, right in there, and then goes out to the playground parking lot area. And, you know, we expect we'd put fencing there for privacy for our residents and for privacy and security for the school.
You're going to go to site plan review with the planning board?
We do.
And is that going to trigger in a traffic study?
I don't know yet whether it will. I mean, this is a fairly small project. You know, it might say that, they might ask for that. We haven't got that far yet. I mean, we haven't filed with them yet. We'll be filing with them shortly, but that's something we'll probably have preliminary discussions in terms of what the planning department thinks is needed for review.
No, I know you met with the neighbors and everything, and there is a lot of ledge up there. Is it your professional opinion, a lot of it can be mad, hammered out, or you're going to have to blast? I mean, have you done any test borings, or are you too early on?
I've done some test bits, but it's difficult. You can't really tell how weather the rock is until you really get into it and clear the overburden off of it and clear the trees off of it and figure out. So we're not sure. It'll probably be a combination of hammering with some blasting. But what we explained to the neighbors who came to that meeting was, you know, that in the event that blasting is done, there's a very strict set of state regulations that pertains to that. They go in, they survey all the surrounding homes, they monitor.
Pictures, videos?
Monitor vibration of the property line. They can't exceed certain levels. So it's a, and on a site like this, we'll be very tightly controlled, small, you know, blasting shots. And as I said, we're, we're really just trying, we're just trying to get into the edge of this rock here, just to basically have our loop and drive lane into that. We're going to make most of that there.
David, the residential, excuse me, the general, what did you say? Business, general business to the residential line goes right down to Manhattan?
Right.
Okay, so.
And then it, then it takes a jog. I think it's shown on the plans that are with you.
Yeah.
It goes around our property.
So then, realistically, Mr. American, 150 feet from the Manhattan Street in line, can you just point where it would be 150 feet if we had the true interpretation of the bylaw?
We would put you, put you back in this territory.
Okay, so those red structures up the back are decks?
Those are patios.
Patios?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are acreate patios. So we have a unit, there's, as I said, the first living level is, and the second level, as you look at it from the front. So we have a little, a little deck off the back, set of stairs down the grade, and then acreate patio, the brown spot there, acreate patio.
So the folks on Railroad, the folks on Manhattan, and not so much the folks on Manhattan, the dirt road behind there, Manhattan Street, is that Manhattan Terrace, or what is that called?
I'm not sure what it's called. It's a private way.
It's a private way, but there's, the old Hassan Plus House was there, and actually two of the Hassen's lived up there, but.
I think they have an address of Manhattan Street, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
283 and 287.
What are you doing for the backyard there? You got any fencing for that as well?
Yeah, we're looking at doing fencing in all of these areas. The school has requested fencing. So we're basically looking at fencing in all of these areas. And then each of here, there's so much rock, I mean, we could put a fence on top of the rock. I don't think it accomplishes anything. As we get down into here, we'll probably do some fencing as well.
Before I open it up to the board, I have some letters here that I want to read into the record. I won't read them into the record. I'll just ask the, ask the authors of the letters if they're here and they'll be heard. Julie Barber Isar, are you here? Julie Barber Isar? Julie wrote a letter to the board paraphrasing. She's in a butter, asking that the buffer of the property be maximized. She's looking for as much open space as possible and wondering, are you, are you required to infiltrate, or are you unable to do so due to the ledge, Mr. American? Are you able to, are you required to infiltrate, or are you unable to do so because of the ledge on the property?
We're, we are infiltrating on the low side of the property. So there's no stormwater infiltration on the high side, which a lot of the residents over there asked about along Manhattan and Railroad, because they were concerned, because they get water in their basement.
Yeah, there's veins all over the place.
So we're doing our recharge on the low side adjacent to the school parking lot area, away from all the existing surrounding homes.
Julie, Julie's record, Julie's letter is in for the record.
Mr. Chairman, also with respect to Ms. Barber Isar's concerns, open space, I think it's shown on the zoning table. Sheet three, the maximum lot coverage allowed in that zone is 80%. We're proposing 41%. The minimum open space required in that zone is 10%, and we're providing 59%. So we're doing the best we can and doing more than would normally be required in that zone for open space and lot coverage concerns, which I think were some of those.
So noted. Nora Zaldiva, you here? Nora, your letter is right here. Do you want to read it when you get recognized, or do you want me to just, do you want me to read it right now, or? It's going to go into the record, so I don't know if you wanted to read it when you get recognized and be heard, or? Okay. Our house, this is from Ms. Zaldiva. Our house abuts the intended development property of the old convent at 253 Manhattan Street. We support the intended residential use, but my husband and I have four concerns, which align to many of the neighbors' concerns expressed at the first meeting on Wednesday, one, two. Our house is in the opposite side of the big rock ledge, and we have, we have a fieldstone foundation. Our house was built in 1851 despite what the assessment says. We are very capitalized letters, concerned about damage to our foundation, and want the developer to take every possible precaution and be in regular contact, whether it's regarding any blasting or ledge removal actions. There are also some large trees whose root systems could be damaged, weakened from groundwork, resulting in the risk of trees falling on our property. We want to be very informed about our rights and what insurance we can cover and not cover in the event their work causes damage to our property. We would like to discuss mitigation methods with the development construction companies. Two, we are aware, we are aware the current property has asbestos materialism. We want the construction company to take every possible precaution, such as tending the building, to address the environmental hazard during demolition. This is a high-density residential area. We want to be informed about timing and methodology so we can make decisions regarding the health of our family. Article three, we do get some water in our basement during heavy storms and certainly do not want this to increase at all. Some neighbors already have much more substantial flooding and have implemented expensive solutions. We want to make sure such, sure the developer and the final result of the development maintains or reduces the flooding of adjacent properties through engineering resolutions and maintaining slash planting as much green space as possible to absorb the water. Maintaining a natural barrier for noise and privacy are a related priority. Lastly, article four, finally, we are all concerned about our traffic and would like to have an independent traffic study done to identify issues. Perhaps the number of units could be reduced slightly, and another traffic plant at Nickel Street would benefit the traffic flow. Respectfully submitted, thanking you, Nora Zaldiva, 279 Manhattan Street. Do you want to address any of that, Mr. American, Mr. Hearn, or do you want to just take it in as the record?
Well, we understand it's going into the record, Mr. Chairman. We understand. We understand Ms. Zaldava's concerns, we suspect other people will share some of those, particularly because of the presence of ledge and the, and the need to do, excuse me, some work with the ledge. Mr. American has spoken to the fact that we want to do as little as possible with the ledge, and we'll take great care. With respect to the materials in the convent, all of that will be done according to the legal requirements. So, you know, we, we want to try to reassure folks that we'll do what's required under the codes, under the laws, under the regulations, um, and we, we're not minimizing these concerns at all.
Thank you. Uh, next letter is from Judith Howard, Chairman of the Norwood Historical Commission. Judith, you want to read the letter, or do you want to be recognized and read it when you are recognized?
You can read it.
Okay.
The chairman of the town is a little small.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry. "Dear Mr. Mulle Hill and members of the board, the public hearing pertaining to the convent at two fifty-three Manhattan Street will be heard by the zoning board of appeal tomorrow, the fifteenth of January. The convent owned by the Archdiocese of Boston is about eighty years old and is one of the distinctive buildings significant to the history of Norwood. The Norwood Historical Commission understands the convent is slated for demolition to be replaced by nineteen townhouses. This area of town is built on ledge, and any blasting most likely would have a damaging effect on nearby homes, the elementary school next door, the rectory, and St. Catherine's of Siena Church itself, causing cracks and crevices to the edifices, ceilings, walls, as well as potential damage to the lodge stained glass windows and chandeliers. Please note the altar faces towards the convent. Lodge trucks carrying debris from the site also may cause damage in the area. A strong recommendation would be for the neighbors and the church leaders to take many pictures for evidence to protect them from any contingencies if demolition takes place and any damage occurs. The demolition of the original Norwood Senior High School caused not only cracks and crevices, but also mice and flooding when none of it had been previously in the homes on Nichols, Bellevue, Cushing, and as far away as Shattuck Rock Road. Although residents would promise tax abatements, they were direct, they were rejected by the town. It is unfortunate the plan is not to rehabilitate the convent. Recent preservation and rehabilitation of well-built, notable properties have been done in the Back Bay, South End of Boston, Lowell, Worcester, and Providence. Interested and knowledgeable architects, contractors, and developers can make this work providing substantial profits to them, peace of mind for the neighbors, and no damage to St. Catherine's and the neighborhood. Respectfully submitted, Judith Howard, Chair of the Norwood Historical Commission." Mr. Huron?
I appreciate my friend Ms. Howard's letter, and, um, my response is that much of what she's talking about is technical stuff, that the historical commission does not have the real ability or resources to comment on. I will tell you that the church leaders know very much, know about this project, because they have signed all the paperwork with us. In fact, there was a notice in the bulletin at St. Catherine's this past Sunday from the pastor, talking about this deal, this transaction. So I think the church is well aware of what we're doing, and that there is risk that is carried with it. Uh, they are part of the transaction. As far as, um, damage to other properties, as we've already said, if there's going to be any blasting or anything else that requires a survey, we will do it. On the last paragraph of her letter, which deals with, "It's too bad that we can't save the convent," the fact of the matter is that nobody was able to save the convent. It is not in good shape, it does not make economic sense. If the parish were to give us the property, maybe the convent could be saved, but since they're not going to do that, we wouldn't expect them to do that, we wouldn't want them to do that. Economically, you can't save that building and make it something. So that's what, we're basing that on experience and knowledge.
Last letter is from Mr. Hayes, John Hayes, he in the building? John, on five, seven Maple Street, or three and five Maple Street. Mr. Hayes writes a four-letter, uh, uh, four-page letter here, and I won't read, read it all. Uh, he makes a lot of coaching points about, you know, the design, um, how the developer's variance is gonna be, um, uh, looked at by the board, uh, he cites some case law, uh, special permit criteria, the mitigation, um, why the developer, uh, did certain things and how he designed it. So I'm gonna put that in the record, it's Mr. Hayes's, um, uh, the existent, the existing convent is a fine building, and preserving it would be in the interest of the neighborhood and the town. I would say that he's probably a proponent for leaving the building up and not moving forward to nineteen. So those are the ones we received from the, uh, public that are part of the record, and, um, I'm gonna open it up to the board now, uh, and we'll take questions from the board to the applicant, and then after the board is recognized, we'll open it up to the audience. So, uh, let's start with Mr. Perry, who's a local architect here of, uh, I think-
How long you been in business? Five years?
Mr. John Perry?
Actually, I'd like to go last, but I, I was, I was not at the meeting, I, I just heard about this the other day, and I guess it was a meeting at the Civic-
Yep.
-Center, but it was not a zoning hearing, it was just an informative hearing.
Yep.
And I, all I can do right now is just comment on some of the statements I think that were made, and, uh, there was, again, I wasn't there. There was a comment that said, uh, "Could they exit off Manhattan Street and take a right turn only?" And I'm not sure where that came from, but that doesn't even make sense, because where would you go in Westwood and turn around? It's in the-
No, I don't understand, I'd probably loop up School Street and down Railroad, I don't know, I mean, again, it's-
I mean, it was, it was sort of silly things, but, uh, again, there was a, uh, no guarantee or assurance that residents would use the Norwood computer, uh, computer rail system, because it doesn't go everywhere, and I think they were saying that would relieve traffic, but you're not gonna take the computer rail system to Walpole, or, you know, or other parts of the town. So I, I, I got a lot of research to do.
Okay.
And, uh, I prefer to spend some time on it.
Sure. We'll go to Mr. Brady.
Uh, just a couple of questions for the owner, if I could. Sorry about that. Pull it up to you. I don't even need it. Uh, a couple of questions. How much, can you tell how much you purchased the property for?
No. We haven't purchased it, yet. We have it under agreement.
Can't divulge it?
We cannot. It, it's confidential, and any real estate transaction really is confidential until it's on record in the registry of deeds.
All right, next, next question. Uh, how about the, I can't see this, I can't read this thing, I'm getting too old. Is it, does it say anywhere what the acreages of that land mass there?
One point nine three acres.
The, in total?
The, the lot that we're buying is one point nine three acres. Just under two acres.
All right, I won't, never mind, I'm good on the third question, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Mr. Riley, no, Mr. Riley goes to Mrs. Anderson.
I was pleased to see that the neighbors will be covered if there is any damage to their homes in the past. With that, you seem to have assured everybody for that, so we would be-
Some people would buy these units.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Thank you. Uh, the chair's final comment is, uh, as a third-generation townie here, uh, who had an uncle who was a Jesuit, was a visiting, regular visiting, uh, lecturer there at the church, uh, CCD, slided down that hill, was in that convent, remember all the sisters very, very well, some with some bad memories, but we'll leave that alone. But I, I just have fond memories of it. It's a shame that through either neglect or, or just non-funding, that the, the building couldn't be preserved. Um, are you stating for fact that the money is not going into the coffers of the Archdiocese of Massachusetts of Boston, but it's staying in St. Catherine's general fund?
Mr. Chairman, I have been assured of that by the business manager of the parish, by the pastor, and I'm happy to give you a copy of a page of this last, last week's bulletin that answers the question of who gets the money and cites canon law. Let me file that with the board.
Sure. Because that's, again, a big thing with, with the school enrollment and the school, and there's been a lot of talk bandied about that the school is destined to close and whatnot, and I know that that building is older than the convent almost, so, um... I believe, yeah, I, I'll, I'll leave it alone at that. I'll entertain most, uh, testimony from the audience. Who wants to be heard first? Please raise your hand. Mr. Brady has one more question.
And that's just a couple of points of interest. What, what's the size of each condo? You have a square footage of each condo?
They're gonna be two beds, three beds?
Two bedrooms.
Seventeen hundred square feet in that territory, two bedrooms?
In each one?
Yeah.
Seventeen hundred feet, or one point nine eight of property.
You all set?
No, but, go ahead. Okay. Who would like to be recognized first? Don't be shy, all at once. Sir, right over here. Please. Can you just come right up here and put the, put the record, uh, name and address, please?
Uh, Ward Jennings, two eighty-seven Manhattan Street.
Thanks, Mr. Jennings. Thank you.
My concern was when we talked at the town, the meeting a week ago, they were talking about coming off Manhattan and having a slight grade going to the back of the lot. If you're familiar with the lot, as you've talked about, Sliding Hill was there, it would have to be quite the mountain to make that to a slight increase, and all the people behind would be, say, eight, ten feet below the dirt level, and then you're gonna have a thirty-foot tower on top of that. I mean, it'd be like blocking the sun. Uh, and not to mention that one of the units there faces right onto the dirt road, as you say, I mean, literally faces the front door of, you know, the Hassan Fuss House is right there. And I, I guess the last one would be that the houses on the right-hand side would be just looking inside the school windows. I mean, is that really what?
No, I, I, I hear what you're saying. Um, it is a, it's a steep, uh, pitch there from the rock, but it does level off going towards Railroad Avenue. Um, you are gonna have to dig quite a bit in there, Mr. American, aren't you, um, to, to get into that grade, so you're not going at six o'clock to eleven o'clock?
No, we have a modest uphill slope from Manhattan Street up, all the way up to the turnaround area. It's uphill all the way.
Right.
I think it's five or six percent, it's nothing, nothing excessive.
Nothing excessive. But that, the height of that rock, uh, ledge behind the homes on the Happy Street is, what'd you say, twenty feet high?
Yeah, it's in that territory, fifteen to twenty feet higher, yeah.
But what about the houses on Railroad that? I mean, that don't need straight up, the houses that are right behind the school, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a mountain behind it.
Well, yeah, I mean, again-
And then how does drainage go? How will the water run off of that? If they're putting the drainage in the center, it doesn't really help those people on the backside.
Well, this is what, you know, again, they're gonna have to show the board, and the future boards, meaning the planning board, uh, the drainage calps and the drainage plan, um, has to go before the, the, the planning board, um, and the town engineer's gonna be looking at that, Mr. Murphy and Sarah and Mark Ryan. But I guess, I guess my question is, um, kind of segueing on to David's comments, um, what would you like to see there, knowing that something is gonna be done?
Well, I know they talked about commercial, but wouldn't commercially need a second version of egress, they'd have to be able to exit out onto Railroad Avenue anyway if they're gonna do something commercial there, correct?
They, they also mentioned an apartment building, I don't think an apartment building would fly too well, but, uh-
No, I don't either.
Yeah.
I'm totally into converting, you know, redoing the convent, I agree, it's one more beautiful building than Norwood, it'd be nice to see that-
Where do you live, Mr. Jennings? Are you on, um, Manhattan?
Yeah, I'm on two eighty-seven Manhattan.
Which is?
Right behind the, the rock.
Okay, so you're right behind the, where you, uh, right before the D and G, right before the School Street?
I am right-
Cross from Maple?
No, I am on Manhattan Place, the dirt road, I am right here.
Okay, very good, very good, very good. Okay.
So it's something to keep in mind, I mean, if you're, especially if you're raising that up and you're putting these houses on top of it, I mean, you'd be, you'd be looking at a bunch of towers.
Thanks, Mr. Jennings, I appreciate it very much. Anybody else? Ma'am, in front?
Hi there. I'm God Harper, and my property is here somewhere.
Haha.
She's a real person.
Two fifty-two. Yeah, you're next to the King's old house?
About, depending on how many square feet this building is going to be, but I've been told that it's gonna be like thirty feet high, and there's no basement, so you're gonna have a giant, and my, my problem I have with it is that my property has a three-foot stone wall, and St. Catherine's, it's been disintegrated because of the erosion that goes down there all the time. The trees have fallen down in our yards. This past winter, we got a quarter feet that actually broke the fence next door to me, and I don't see this, and plus my, this three foot, so then it slopes up to like where you're, where you people are sitting, and then they're gonna put a thirty-foot structure twenty-four feet from my property.
Yep.
So I find that that's really too high. The, I mean, everybody else seems to be level, but it's my yard that has to drop in it. So I don't like that, but I did speak to him about the wall, and they did say that they would do something with the wall at the meeting we had the last time, so you need to retain the wall out here, because it's, it's just falling apart. But I wish they could not go behind my house or move it down, but we all think there's too many units going in there.
Okay.
Too much traffic, you know the traffic we have there. So how big are these structures?
So they're gonna be seventeen hundred square feet each.
Each?
So the duplexes will be north of three thousand square feet, so the two units together, and then you just add there for, if you have the triplex, it's gonna be forty-five, forty-six hundred, forty-seven, somewhere in there, per total square. You know? You've seen, you've seen the townhouses that are, you know, that are out there, I mean, they're obviously, they're gonna look good, but I understand your point, that, you know, you're gonna look out your backyard and, and for the longest time, don't look at nothing.
Because I'm not level with them. They're gonna be untrapped for me, you know, it's not, it's not good.
I appreciate that, I can appreciate that.
So, um, I want the wall fixed, and I would like them to move that front door down a little bit or get rid of it, period. But move it back, so it's not right on a trappery, because then there's another one right behind my neighbor's house. So we both, we've got two of them right there, you know? So that's my, my way.
Thank you, Chad. Thank you very much. Mr. American, was there, were there any other design layouts that you had contemplated for the property? Was there, uh, uh, A, B, and C, or, and then you decided on A?
Well, we looked at different options, and, you know, which is, one of the reasons that we settled in on this was because it, it spread the units out throughout the site. You know, I think you, you mentioned that, you know, with that hundred and fifty-foot setback, we'd end up having to basically cram all of the units back in the back portion of the property, and, you know, with a ten-foot setback requirement for structures to a property line, we'd end up being much closer to the lot lines than we are currently proposed. So we think this layout basically just spreads out the open space and, and gives everybody breathing room, as opposed to trying to scrunch it all in the back and take all that ledge out and, you know, really, you know, shoehorn it in there.
Thank you.
This allows us to use the whole property.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening.
How are you?
Uh, my name is John Hayes, and I live directly across the street-
Oh, yeah, you're the fellow that, uh, wrote the letter?
Yes, that's right.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, I, I tried to let him hear you.
I have not, actually, I spent some time going through the drawings.
Yep.
And I don't plan to go through that whole list of detailed things that I-
It was a, it was a good letter, it was a good letter, some points there.
Good. Well, I think the main thoughts that I wanted to get across to you is I think you shouldn't approve this project as presented, because the buildings are too big, the walls are because the buildings are too big, the walls are too high, and the buildings are too close to the streets. Now, if there's a scheme that solves those three problems, I think it would be something that could be talked about, but I really think we shouldn't get in the situation of having built what's shown on the current drawings here. I think it would be not in the interest to the neighborhood and not in the interest of the town to have these buildings built that are so much out of character of the existing neighborhood. Uh, there are no buildings in the neighborhood that I know of that are anywhere near the scale of the buildings shown on the plan. And there are no buildings that have vertical walls that are as high as those three-story townhouses would have. So I think it would just be shocking to anyone to see this project if it were completed that way and try to think of the, the being part of the neighborhood that exists now.
Did you go to the last meeting at the, uh, police, uh, department?
No, at the police department.
Well, where was the meeting? Is that the Civic?
Civic Center.
Is that the Civic Center?
Uh, no, I was sick that night. I have to pass up on that. Um, I think I heard in the earlier discussion that, uh, you're thinking of the worst that could happen, that you could build retail as a right on this site. But as I understand it, if you wanted to go retail on this site, uh, you would be stuck with a hundred and seventy-five-foot setback unless the board decides to grant it.
Well, yeah, he's asking for relief from that particular bylaw, so...
Okay. Well, my hope is that if some sort of townhouse development gets built, that it's different from the one that's shown on the drawing at the moment.
Do you have any ideas that you might wanna share with the developer that, I mean, being an architect, a...
Well, I was surprised when I saw the drawing that it was for townhouses. Um, I would have expected to see this team that left the existing concrete building in place and did a substantial addition to the back of it that created condominium apartments rather than condominium townhouses. Um, I think can't force some developer something that he doesn't wanna do as an architect, that something that would be a lot more comfortable with.
Thanks, Mr. Hayes. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Mr. Hurd?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I appreciate Mr. Hayes's comments. We saw his letter, a four-page letter, very well done, about four o'clock this afternoon. I don't know, though, how he is, why he's so displeased with the design of these units when nobody has seen them. Uh, he did compare in his letter the Marini project with this, and this project will not, will be very different from the Marini project in terms of...
To his defense, and he can speak for himself, but I think the, the biggest thing up there is change. Anything that's gonna be in there is gonna be, you know, you know, foreign to that whole neighborhood because that convent's been there for decades. That land has been that way for eons.
I understand that, and, and I, we, we have heard, repeated several times, that we should redevelop the convent. And I will say once again that the people who know this business have looked at it, and the archdiocese could not find anybody who would redevelop, which is why they ultimately eliminated that condition.
Fair enough.
We propose projects, and our architect has not done with the work, but I will submit this to the board so you can see a rendering of what it may look like, and it's still in the works. It will not be some monolith thirty feet high of blank wall or straight wall. It will have dormers, it will have, uh, it will be broken up in such a way...
Hold on to that and submit it later, okay?
We'll submit it and we'll have the architect in, uh, when we come back.
Let's hear from some more of the neighbors. Anybody else wanna be heard? Anybody else? Ma'am in the back? Go ahead. Yep, sir? That's Stephen Hassan's place.
That's Patrick Mulley's.
How are you?
Wish I had Jack and Margaret here.
I know.
They could back me up.
This fella owns the property behind the development up on the dirt road. He's been there for five thousand years.
Uh, my concern, where is the gas line from under this property?
Mr. American?
From Manhattan Street.
Up my driveway, up my private way?
No, no, no. Along the main drive that we're proposing. Yeah.
There's quite a grade from the top of that rock down to the parking lot with the school by. I'm wondering who's done their homework on this property. The engineers, have they checked all of that land where the cul-de-sac's gonna be? That, that land's been fouled with, forever. There's never been anything there. The convent land, I have no problem with that because before the convent was built, there was a three-decker estate, a pawn estate, which lasted from the time of the Civil War until they built the convent. And then, so that, that's all that's, you know, like, come back from that into the, where the road's going in and the cul-de-sac and that grade from my property down to the, to the school. How much are you gonna activate there for, in that wooded area? How's that slope gonna be? Where's Patty and I sledding down that hill? If you had a good ice storm, you could go all the way up to Washington Street.
I remember it well.
At the top of that hill.
Remember it well.
Yeah?
Remember it well.
And, uh, my mother before me and this people before him. And I'm just wondering, that's quite a, quite a grade down there. How, how, uh, how much of that land are you gonna take out in there if the little woods are in there?
Yeah, where the Manhattan dirt road is, the, uh, the houses up there, then.
My house is...
Yeah, that duplex there.
Okay. Um, so up in that area, uh, we're gonna lower the grade by a couple of feet and put a short retaining wall. We're, we're very close to grade up in, in the vicinity of Mr. Hassanfuss's property. Um, you know, as I said, we're, we're kind of shaving down the edge of that rock outcrop as it comes down adjacent to our driveway. But those two units there are within a couple of feet of existing grade.
That'll be the highest point of the development?
That will be the top of the development, yeah.
Would that be along the grade of like his front door or be, would that building be, uh, taller than his house?
Uh, these buildings will sit down a couple of feet below his driveway, so I don't, I'm not sure where his front door resides in there.
There's a twenty-foot road there.
So, yeah, I would think that the, the living space would be comparable to his first-floor living space in that territory.
Anything else else?
Well, one other thing, which I mentioned at the last meeting. I don't think, I think people laughed at me about it because it was my concern. There's an abandoned mine under that property. You know that? Did you know that? Did you do some research on that?
We did.
And what did you find out about that?
There was a mine there long ago.
There was? So there's mines shafts down there?
Don't know about that, Mr. Chairman. I...
Is there, though? I mean, what did you find? I mean, I, I'm hearing this from the first.
We found, if I may, let me get the reference, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sullivan, who couldn't be with us this evening, but is part of the development team, one of the principals of the developing, uh...
Little louder, Dave.
Mr. Sullivan, uh, had done some research, and I would have to find it in this paper that somebody wrote. Uh, there was a brief mention of a lead line, and I've heard others mention that since Mr. Hassanfuss mentioned it at the, uh, neighborhood meeting we had. But, you know, if there's something in the ground, we're going to find it when we dig, and we'll have to deal with it. So whether it's there or not, I don't see how it affects the development. We're gonna take care of it.
I hope so because if the drainage system, you say you, you've built a drain, are we gonna have like a riprock down below where the, where the water's gonna go into down in the parking lot? How's the drainage gonna go down until it sinks out from, from the upper part of my property?
So the water will run down, the driveway's downhill all the way to Manhattan Street, right? And the water will run down, and we have catch basins at different intervals that pick up all that runoff. We treat it, and then we route it to an underground infiltration system over near the parking lot of St. Catherine's. So we're picking up all the runoff from all the rooftops, piping it to that system, all the driveway areas piping it to that system.
That water also runs down the ledge from all we are having to do.
There's a man right there telling me to tell you about water problems in this area because his whole basement has been flooded up.
No, I know. I know.
You know, you know this.
I know, I know, I know.
And there's brooks that come down from westward.
Yep. No, I know. There's a lot of veins up there, Stevie.
There's water veins in that area.
Anybody that touches that's gonna have to address it, no matter what they do when they put the shovel.
My concern, my concern is with the, uh, the supposed mine. There's, there's abandoned shafts down there, and they start blasting, and they start excavating there. Is there gonna be a problem with some of these waterways underneath waterways?
Developers and unknowns.
Something has to be addressed.
It will be, I would assume.
Because the fact is that your Aunt Margaret and my mother skated in a little torn where El Jennings's house is.
Yep.
There was a pond there, and it was filled in. The old mall went down back before the Civil War. And if you don't think, isn't that dug down, found power horns and everything else down there? That, and I told the funny story about my crowbar, which people just didn't pick the stroke. Did you hear that story? Crowbar went down. I'm sorry. So this, this stuff we have to be addressing. That's my only...
I appreciate it, Stevie. I was just saying...
You know, the water, it's draining the water. It's not so much me, I'm on fire. People like Y'all and this lady over here.
They can't, we, we won't allow them.
Yeah, it's, are, are, you know, it's all gonna be a...
They can't shed the water onto somebody else's property, and that's part of the whole development process. Thank you, Stephen. Anybody else? Sir, right up here?
My name is Stephen O'Conne. I live on One O'Way Mile, Oak Street.
Stephen, thank you.
Very familiar with the site. Grew up on Railroad Avenue. Went sledding on the hill many times. Went to St. Catherine's, as did most of my family. Uh, my wife and I both support the project. We've been looking for a townhouse in Norwood. There's not a lot of opportunities. This is pretty much an ideal site. Both commute to Boston. The proximity to the train, in the bus line, in the businesses in Norwood Center is ideal. And I think it'd be great use of the site, so.
Thank you, Mr. O'Conne. Duly noted. Anybody else on the way back, sir? Mr. Greeley? How are you, Joe?
Very good, thank you.
How's it going?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're very welcome.
Thanks for having me. Joe Greeley, uh, sixteen St. Joan Ave, District Six, Comedy Member. I'm not in a butter, but I am planning on a future by attending St. Catherine's on a regular basis. Just a couple, a couple of questions. Point of information, I think, for the board, uh, from a blasting standpoint, Ken, is, is this the right, um... Is the ZBA the, what they would either restrict or limit or eliminate blasting altogether?
I don't know. That's a good question. I'll have to go through the planning board, and I know the building department would have a lot of oversight of the, uh, the whole process as well. David, would you know the actual protocol then?
Fire department really has a lot to say with blasting operations, and state law is strict on this. Uh, all of those rules would be followed. Uh, there's a whole protocol for doing anything if we have to get into blasting. We're not sure yet whether we have to get into blasting.
Um, just my point as far as the blasting is concerned, a couple of points. One, um, obviously you could throw a stone from the top of that hill and hit several houses. So if they're that close through the air, then obviously, um, they would feel, I would assume that they'll feel the blasting in all of those houses surrounding the hill. Um, secondly, from a restriction standpoint, with the kids recessing in the school, Yahart, for instance, uh, classrooms, uh, class was going on probably eight AM to ten, two PM-ish. Um, so certainly if there was an appropriate time for blasting, it would probably be a very limited period of time during the day. This second, um, second question I had relative to the plans, and I only saw the design, um, this design actually, it was, uh, posted in the, in the newspaper. Um, and I was wondering if there is a requirement from a safety standpoint to have basically a back door exit, entrance for fire apparatus, et cetera?
There is not, for a commercial or residential.
Okay, so the cul-de-sac's devices?
Correct.
Yeah, and then again, you know, they'll do that, the site plan, the fire department will have to look at that and, to your point.
Good, thank you. Uh, and then also relative to safety, um, the knob where the rotary and the other probably turnaround spot in the middle, um, not quite the cookies, but close to the cookie in the middle. Does that an area where, let's say, either an engine, an engine fire engine or hopefully not the ladder truck, but is there adequate space there for a turnaround?
Yes, there is now, and all of that is vetted by the fire department. When we do set the site plan review, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, all that comes up, site plan, yeah.
Um, and then finally, from a, just a traffic standpoint, um, I know that area basically from the convent down to the corner of Washington Street has been, um, labeled as a choke point by various people, the fire department, police, et cetera. And in fact, so much to the point that they've eliminated or eliminated all parking from maybe the convent down to the corner. So from a, from an access, uh, you know, emergency vehicle access, go up, wash up Manhattan and down Manhattan to its, uh, center of town. Um, I think even though this property only has nineteen units, I think the fact that there are seventy-five or seventy-six parking spots speaks to the point that it's not only the nineteen units that has to be evaluated, but assuming, assuming eighty percent of those parking spots filled, you're talking about fifty to sixty cars in that very small area. So even though the nineteen units might not impact traffic, the fact that they have so many parking spaces would certainly, I would think, would certainly be a justification for requiring some kind of traffic study. Um, it's already a problem area. You've got what I, what I assume the driveway would be close to face Maple Street. So you've got not only the driveway itself, but also that intersection that's already, it's already that intersection already, whether entering Maple or exiting Maple. And then Nichols is, I mean, yeah, Nichols is even worse. So you've got very tight quarters, tight turn, turning, um, already. And I just think that this, um, this new, uh, curve right into that new area, um, would definitely add more traffic.
I think that they'll head that from the planning board to Joe. We have to have site plan approval anyways. Yeah, yeah, and then the traffic standard may come into play. I can't speak to it for certain, but it's a very well said point.
All right, I would strongly recommend that. Um, on the flip side of everything I just said, I think it is a good use of the property. Um, unfortunately, the way of, the convent has gone away of any number of things that it will probably never be used, um, either for a similar purpose or by derision by the public. So I think, yeah, even though I don't, I don't live there and I would be to be one of the neighbors during construction, I think it's a good use of the property.
Thanks, Mr. Greeley. Thank you. Mr. Hurd?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of clarifications, if I could. There is parking allowed in front of the school building up to, almost the convent property. If you look there, uh, there are people parked there. It is allowed, and apparently Public Works and the Police Department feel that's okay. As far as the number of vehicles on the site, I think a better estimate, the seventy-six is what we're providing. What is required under the zoning bylaw is, um, fifty-seven, three per unit. The likely number of cars on the site on a regular basis would, would likely not exceed thirty-eight because tho, these types of units may have two people each owning a car in the unit. But it's not likely to have more than two car owners in a particular unit. So the seventy-six is there because we've got the space for it. It keeps people from parking on the roadway. But on a regular basis, you're going to have fewer than forty cars there.
Let's hear from somebody else. Anybody else? Ma'am in the back here?
Hi there.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
What do you mean, I'm running? I'm in my professional, yeah, I'm in my grocery.
Sure.
And my daughter goes to the Catholic of Siana.
Nice.
And she started Pirova here, the first year when she started Pirova, Pirova. My concern is, how about, he said, uh, they will build, uh, nine unit, nineteen units. So he's taken about all the people probably going with me there. So if we don't have enough elderly people who are living in there, so what you, are you going to have to start to defend people? What about of children's safety, we set, um, sets of, who are gonna live next to kids when they are, are, are listed outside?
Mr. Chairman, we don't propose to limit this to older folks, of, of which some people think I'm now one, but, uh, my grandchildren in particular, but, um... I, I'm just suggesting to the board that the likely purchasers of this type of housing are either people who want to downsize from a house they've had or maybe folks starting out. Neither of those groups tends to have many children. Now, in terms of the safety of the schoolchildren, um, you know, we've taken that into account. We think our design... Now, in terms of the safety of the schoolchildren, you know, we've taken that into account. We think our design takes that into account. Our driveway is not opposite Maple Street. It's away from Maple Street, which allows for the construction of units as a, as a cushion between the roadway and the school property. The school itself is very much aware of this project and is, as is the pastor. They've thought of those things. That's foremost in their minds, I'm sure. I was on the school board for a number of years. I know what the concerns are. And, you know, we're not proposing to do anything that will create a problem. In fact, a commercial use is likely to create more traffic in that site, coming and going in and out of that site than this.
The same here?
Okay, about the traffic, you said that we have two, two car inside parking. So what about when they are visitors?
Yeah, but this is, that's what you're saying. He's providing seventy-six spots. That was the question I asked. Is it wide enough for street parking in there if somebody wants to park in front of the duplex to get a car around it?
Not, not, you know, you could, but it would make it a little bit tight. We're designing it as a loop around. So if somebody parked on the roadway, there's still, what's a twenty-foot roadway, so there's still plenty of them to get by. Twelve feet for somebody to drive by, allowing eight feet for parking. So there's room for it. We wouldn't encourage it and we don't think it would be really a big problem because we've got four spaces per unit, more than required.
Okay, one more. What about when you have the construction, the laws on the, on the.
Well, there's five laws that they have to adhere to as far as when they can start construction and when they have to end. So there's a certain timeline that they have to adhere to and that's through the building department. They'll govern that, so. It's, I think it's seven in the morning or seven-thirty they can start? I think it's seven.
Seven.
Yeah, and then you have to cease, cease, and this is the five, five-thirty?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Yeah, so, but there's certain times that they have to adhere to. They can't go right into the, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Anybody else? Over here, sir? It's a little there.
How are you doing?
Oh, yeah.
Paul, we're going two-three-two Manhattan Street.
Sure, Paul.
One question that's been asked and it keeps not answering is from Manhattan Street to the top of the project.
Yup.
What is the height? It's, 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 oh, it's just a slight grade. You know as well as I do, okay? It can't be that slight a grade. So the top units have got to be how high off Manhattan Street?
The driveway slopes up from one-forty-eight to about one-sixty-three. So it slopes up about fifteen feet from Manhattan all the way into the end of our proposed driveway.
And what are you doing?
Just the jump on line?
And the units, you know, go along with it. It goes up about fifteen feet from Manhattan Street all the way in, which is three hundred feet in, two-fifty, three hundred feet in. It's an average grade of about five percent, six percent, which is not an excessive grade.
You're saying fifteen feet?
Fifteen feet, yeah.
So the units at the top of the hill are gonna be fifteen feet above Manhattan Street, roughly.
Yeah, in the back. That's where the existing grade is, fifteen feet.
So then you're talking putting a three-story building on top of that fifteen feet. Does your garage, first floor, second floor?
Thirty feet. That's the building height.
That's the allowed building height.
So, I mean, those houses from my house, you're gonna be able to see every one of them. Every one of them that are up on that hill, young and silly, because they're that far up.
Paul, Paul, you knew this day was, you knew this day was gonna come. What would, what would you like to have seen if you had, you know, magic wand?
I'm not totally opposed.
Right.
To the project. Again, like Dave said here, while you might get retired people, how many retired people are gonna move in there that have to climb two stories to get to their bedrooms? Come on. I'm, I'm retired and sure as heck, I'm not going to. Okay, if you're retired and you're looking to downsize, you're looking for one level, that you have everything on one level. But nobody seems to want to do that. Nobody in this town seems to want to do it. Every time they build something, it's two stories, three stories, whenever they can get past, okay? Now you get down to all concannies, are those units similar to what you're looking to build?
Not at all.
Okay.
But the height-wise, is that thirty feet high, right?
I'm sorry?
Height-wise, they're thirty feet high, right?
I, I don't know what the height is there, but they have almost flat roofs. If you look, they have almost no pitch on those compared with what we're proposing.
From an aesthetic standpoint, you're, you're proposing a single-family looking townhouse with aprons and.
When the, when the, when the plans are submitted, what you're gonna see is the, the third floor, which is the second living floor, is basically all roof with dormers in it. So it, it really looks like a two-story with a third with dormers. It's not like three stories and then a roof on top of that. The, the third story is the roof line.
Okay, and then the hundred-and-fifty foot setback, is that so you can put three units on both sides of these three units here?
Mr. Chairman.
One, two, three, one, two, three.
Mr. Chairman, if we get relief from the hundred-and-fifty foot setback, we're able to build units in that space. I submit, again, that hundred-and-fifty foot setback is to protect residential uses from business uses. It's unnecessary in the present case because we're residential use across from residential uses.
It really would pretty much destroy the development possibilities if we adhered to the strict, you know, interpretation of a hundred-and-fifty feet. That's what I asked for, you know? So again, it's something the board's gonna have to consider, Paul, you know, because it's, you know, we all knew this day was coming and we just didn't know what was gonna happen. As soon as they banged that sign on the lawn, I was like, oh God. You know, I was hoping against all hope that they could gut it out and build inside it, but that's not to be.
But again, the same thing, we have to have nineteen units on, under two-eighths or something.
Well, that's what we gotta decide. I appreciate it very much, Paul. Thank you. Anybody else wanna be heard? Ma'am in the front? Hi there.
Hi, I'm Sammy Button-Joe. I live two-fifty-six River Avenue.
Yup.
And I am one of the abutters that are really being abuttered.
Sure.
Um, my property is.
You beat me to the punch. I was asking you, which one are you?
Right here?
Yup.
So these two, other way we do them.
Yup.
Although I was talking to the engineer earlier, I won't give to it, it wouldn't be a six-foot wall. But I don't know, it's almost level. Our property is like level. We're about the only ones that, anybody else is below that. Our property is level with the church property.
Yes.
Our property is sort of about six. And I'm not crazy about it, but considering the way I look at it, oh, by the way, the convent was built in nineteen forty.
What?
The convent was built in nineteen forty.
Well, you better tell the assessors. They've got it, it's not, the assessors have it as nineteen-twenty-two, Mr. Chairman, and I thought they were always right.
My sister's a nun. And I asked her one day, she calls every Sunday, and I asked her, what was the convent built in nineteen forty? So I'll take the reference. She said about a hundred years, so it's not very old. And it has been affected, and then it is. So as I said, I'm not crazy about it. And I do go along with the idea of one-way traffic. I mean, as it stands now, even in River Avenue, when the kids go to school, the buses, my husband calls it the lineup.
Yeah, the backup.
When the buses, although some of them, as it used to be.
Yeah.
The buses come, but they only come in that way. The kids are not coming in from the head of the street.
Right.
Because of this crossing. So I am with limits, with reservations, I inform the project.
Thank you, Mrs. Button-Joe. Thank you. Anybody else? Sir?
Go ahead.
I'm doing all right, David. Don Thomas, twelve Howard Street, one street over.
Yup.
Um, I guess I'm more concerned with, I understand, okay, they're saying that this is, the zone is a commercial property. I haven't lived in the last commercial property in the downtown Nowood, like when the zoning lines were redrawn. My house was there like, I don't know, a hundred years before that. And when they drew the new downtown, my house is the corner. So is the issue here that they should be applying for a rezoning and saying, hey, we wanna, the town needs to change this to residential instead of commercial? I mean, why, why are we here worrying about a hundred-and-fifty feet from the center of the street when, okay, we're gonna build houses. There's always been houses here. And granted, some of these houses might already be in the commercial zone, right? My house is in the commercial zone. And I can tell you right now, I got a residential on side, a residential on the other, but I live in a commercial property. So why don't they just apply for a rezoning and say, hey, the town needs to redraw this as commercial or that?
Well, that's a valid question. It's a strategy question from the development team and let's ask the applicant. Did you, did you contemplate that, David?
Well, there are various things that militate against that. One, it takes a long time to get the zoning changed. Secondly, we're looking for multifamily dwellings. Those are only allowed in certain districts of the town, including the general business district. We're not the central business district and your property might be.
Yeah, I'm a central business.
Central business. We're, we're the, the general business district runs, the line between central business and, and general business runs somewhere right through the school building. And so we're sort of the, like an island, if you exclude the parish, the rest of the parish property, we're kind of an island of business zone. We don't want to use it for business, but I think to go and rezone it just creates a whole bunch of other questions. Are you doing spot zoning, which is not allowed? What do you gain by that? Because the use that we want to make of this property is allowed in that. And the use that we want to make of it, you know, from the point of view of what works financially, if you zone this for general residents, the developers are gonna find the properties too expensive. Too much work is required, too much money is required. It wouldn't work. This, from a financial point of view, we look at and say, we don't mind if it's general business. We need a special permit to do what we want to do. That's, that's the difference.
Makes sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. So then, so the next question is, is this is going to be deeded by the, by the county to be one piece of property in the town of Nowood?
The, the way that works is we have already got a plan signed by the planning board. We haven't recorded it in the registry of deeds. It would be recorded when the transaction ultimately goes through. But the Arts Diocese has agreed with us on where to draw the boundary in a way that satisfies the needs of the parish and the school, where to draw the line, and satisfies our needs in terms of what land we want to develop.
And I don't know if the town have any say in that?
What, the rewriting of the lot line? That's what I asked.
We're re-deed.
Well, no, I asked how they did that. And Counselor Hearn said that it was a bunch of parcels that they merged together?
Over the years, the Arts Diocese acquired various parcels from people, either by purchase or by gift, to assemble that campus, if you will, that has the school, the rectory.
Yup.
The junior high building out on Washington Street, the convent, the older school building. All of that was assembled in various parcels. A little tricky looking for all the deeds, but this, when, when you subdivide property like this, to carve off the lot that we're buying, that gets done by going to the planning board with what's called an approval-not-required plan. And it's sort of an oxymoron. They have to approve it, even though it says approval-not-required. But what it means is full subdivision approval is not required because we're presenting a lot that has adequate frontage on a public way. This lot has all of that. And the planning board has no real discretion on that. If it satisfies that requirement, they sign it. And when we record it, that creates the new boundary. So we have that plan. We're waiting to record it. If we get all the approvals we need and go forward, that would be recorded as part of.
So the planning board said, the planning board said yes to the, to the layout?
To the resort.
Yeah.
Which is a resort.
To the lot lines, to the lot lines.
For the re-roll of the lot.
Yup.
Okay, so then I guess the next question is, is the project would be financially unviable if you had the setback from the center of the street? Because it looks to me like you actually have the first building, the first three, first two, three-unit buildings are, and I can't imagine. How, how far off the actual street are they?
Because that's what I asked too, sir. And I, I think the hundred-and-fifty foot would almost eliminate the twelve units. Am I wrong, Mr. Martin?
I think it would eliminate six.
Yeah, it comes back into that territory.
Um, what's the scale?
Bring you back into probably the front of units eleven, twelve, nine, nine, eleven, thirteen, you know, kind of that front, front group of units.
Eleven feet off the sidewalk, thirteen feet off the street?
So at that point, we would be trying to put all those condo units in the back.
We shoot hard.
You know, and you'd be, you'd be pulling that ledge out and you'd be going to ten feet from lot lines, which the bylaw allows and.
So what about taking, and taking the first two, three-unit buildings and making them two-unit buildings and drop the units?
Where did the number nineteen come from? Is that a financial lot number that you put into, to, from a profit perspective? Or would you just think nineteen would fit on the property correctly?
Both. I mean, it, it's a financial consideration. To make the project work, we need to get an appropriate number of units. And we think that the appropriate number of units, from a financial point of view, will fit on the site.
And that's where we come in, sir, as far as the, what Counselor Hearn said, as long as it, in our interpretation, doesn't denigrate from the intent of the bylaw, we're not putting in fifteen units.
Right. Right, that's, that's what I'm kind of like, I don't know necessarily like, exactly like, why is the rule in place? Like people could just come in and say, I don't like the rule.
No, they, they can ask for really, it's like you can.
But that is, that is ultimately what it is. I don't like the rule. Can you change it for me? But, so then my next question is, is, you stated that there was potentially a lead mine on the property?
Mr. Hassifis educated us about that.
I, I'm, I'm with you on that. Nobody, I don't know anything. However, if you're going to dig down into that ledge, and I understand, you know, if it was naturally occurring, it's been there, it's never been touched, or it was touched a hundred years ago and everything's set the way it is, what is the procedure going to be if you find the lead and you pull it up from underground? Because now it's going to be in the groundwater, it's gonna be in the air, it's gonna be in the school parking lot, this. If, assuming the lead is there, that's, and you dig it up?
We, we're actually assuming the lead isn't there because I think that what I read was that there was an attempt to have a mine there and it failed. So it couldn't have been, couldn't have had very much of anything there that was worthwhile. We're not going into the mining business. I don't think it's allowed in that district anyway. I haven't looked, but we're not, we're not gonna do that.
To, I think it would set off a series of alarm bells with the town and the fire department.
Who's gonna check?
Well, the Board of Health would be involved. Every, everybody in this building would probably have their ears pricked back and saying, okay, we gotta get up there and take a look at it. I don't think there is an active mining nor would.
No, there may be a level one.
So, yeah, so, but.
It just seems kind of strange, like, well, if somebody's saying there's lead in the ground, now all of a sudden you have to test for it. You have to check, that you look. Because if you even start digging it up, now you caused a problem and who's gonna pay for that?
No, that, again, you don't know until they start, that's why.
Right, and you don't know until you start. But, you know, like you said, maybe a couple of test wells would say, hey, you know what? There is lead in this ground. Maybe we should walk away now.
We've, we.
But I, I, I don't think that it, it just seems like an odd place for there to be a lead box, you know?
Unfortunately, we've hit the bewitching hour of ten o'clock, so.
Oh, so I have one other question.
Go ahead, sir.
About the runoff. And I'm no expert on the property, but where the church parking lot is and where the proposed development is, it seems to me the church parking lot from that hill is a good, maybe thirty feet down. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's not thirty feet. Is it your intention to take and build up from the church parking lot level so that you can get up to enough grade that you have a place to put the water? Or is it, you're expecting the water to just go under the church parking lot?
We're infiltrating the water into the ground.
Yes.
Which is standard practice. So the whole property slopes uphill from the church parking lot. We're picking up all that runoff and we're routing it into an underground system in that, that green spot.
Right, yeah, it's gonna tap out all the red and green, right?
It's gonna go into the ground. Any overflow would go by sheet flow into the parking area, which is where it goes today. All that runoff goes down into the parking area today. All the runoff from the rock and all the woods just runs down into that parking lot.
Runs down into the parking lot at some point, somewhere, somehow.
And then it gets piped into the drainage system that goes out through there.
So right now, the church is mitigating the runoff from the, up.
Yeah, the church takes all the, the church takes all the runoff from that hill.
Right, right. I was just wondering, like, are you gonna. I was just wondering, like, are you gonna build like a 20-foot tall retaining wall, and then fill it with crushed stone? And just let water sit there until it hurts out on its own?
Well, it's an underground system, so it's an underground storage area that's designed to capture and infiltrate the runoff.
Okay.
We dug test pits. We're putting it in an area where there's soil.
Right, so there is soil in, in that particular area?
Oh, yeah, I went out with the town engineering department, and we dug test pits.
Yeah, so the test pour. So they got a place to put the water?
This'll all come out, pardon the pun, it'll all come out the wash, but, you know. Ladies and gentlemen, it's 10 o'clock. They're gonna shut the doors on us. Do we feel a need to continue this? Obviously, I think that, do we need to hear anymore, or what's the pleasure of the board? Mr. Hearn?
We're happy to continue it, because I think that a couple of weeks down the road, our architect, we want to bring him in, and that will help to explain and answer some of the questions.
February 5th, Ramona, 7:30-ish.
February 5th is the next date, all right.
February 5th at 7:30, folks. Thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, will the meeting be, do we know the meeting be in this room?
It will be, yeah. We are motion to adjourn. We're motion to continue the hearing till February 5th, named by Mr. Hearn, seconded by Mrs. Anderson. All those in favor say aye. Motion to adjourn. Thank you, folks.